At six o'clock, we are ready to be in order for this council meeting. And Jim, would you lead us in the prayer and let's stand for that prayer?
Let us pray. Father, we come to you as representatives of this community. All of us have one thing in common, an interest in what is taking place tonight at this meeting. So we pray for a productive meeting pleasing to you, Lord. We pray that the city council members and staff receive your wisdom as they reason together for the good of our community. For others that may speak, we pray that they are able to present their position in ways that help bring clarity to the decision process. We ask for your blessings for everyone in our community to receive all the benefits of living in such a beautiful and loving part of the Hill Country. May all of us receive more of your joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control, but most of all, love, because love is what makes everything else work well. And we pray that your loving presence be felt here tonight as this meeting is conducted in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I will tell you that if you remain standing for the pledge, Jim is a veteran and a veteran worker of good things in this community. So, alright. We could have the... Marquita, if you will tell us who is leading the pledge and then share with us something about Girl Scouts.
My name is Marquita Pitts and I'm one of the co-leaders for Girl Scout Troop 672. And tonight, we're here earning a couple of steps for our badge and about finding common ground, learning mediation and how things like that are... how y'all go about settling those differences to persuade each other to vote your way. So, anyway, at this time, this is Haley Barton, Kelsey Pitts, and Kayla Clendini, and we are gonna lead us with the pledge.
Alright.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Anything else? Announcements of community interest, and I will tell you, I just got off the air with KSAT-TV News in San Antonio talking about good things in Kerrville.
That's great. Glad to hear that. And I want to welcome everybody here tonight. We've got a big group, so I've only got a few announcements, so we're gonna be quick. I know we have a lot, but I do want to say thank you to the Girl Scouts for that lovely pledge. Thank you very much. Alright, let's get started. I don't know if anybody here had a chance to get out to the park Saturday, but we had a terrific, terrific day out there, all day long. We had the Kerrville Five K Craft Beer Run in the morning. I think we had two hundred, close to 250 runners turned out for that. And as soon as that was over, we had Get Outdoors Day, and that ran from 11 to 3:00. And as you can see, a couple of pictures up there, we had a petting zoo over there. We had the little pig that was fun to pet, and then some of the kids petted the snake. I just took a picture of it. And then we closed at 5:30 with a sand volleyball tournament. I think we had nine to 10 teams, and they played until like 10 o'clock at night. So, it was an outstanding day, and that's in addition to all the other things that we have going on normally there with the water park going on. So, it was a great day all the way. That's the Parks and Recreation Department. I definitely want to give a shout out to Ashley Boyle, who's over here, to Josh Rodriguez, Tina North, and all of the Park and Rec teammates of our city who just did a fantastic job all day and every day here in the city.
Can I ask a question for you?
Yeah.
I'm told, is there a videotape of the dunking incidents?
Yeah, videotape out there somewhere of some poor guy.
That'll be on the site eventually, right?
Yeah, some poor guy got stuck in there. Alright, let's go to our next slide, Summer Fun at the Calo. This is actually a program put on by the library. This is every Wednesday, well, not every Wednesday, but I guess the next, it looks like six in a row. And it started actually last week, but we have a number of professional children's performers, and they perform a free educational program. All of them begin at 10 o'clock, and they last for about 45 minutes, and there's one tomorrow, 10 o'clock, and that is Nancy and Friends, The Puppet Show. And then, of course, there's quite a few more, as you can see. We end with Critter Man there up to July 18th, another photo of somebody holding a snake, so.
He does leave with all his inventory.
Yeah, we have a lot of, I guess, a lot of reptile lovers around here, so if y'all get a chance, get your kids out there, because it's a great deal. And finally, Movies in the Park is back starting this Friday, and I think we have, what is it, we have this week, this Friday? You're lighting your eyes, everybody. Despicable Me Three. This is a free series, also put on by the Parks and Recreation Department. This one is gonna be at Louise Hayes Park, and the next one on July 13th. And then we go to Kerrville Shriner Park for two showings, and then we close August 10th with Coco at Louise Hayes Park. All shows begin at approximately 9:00, and we're gonna be giving out free popcorn. I would advise you to get there early, because this has been the top performing post on our Facebook page, and I think quite a number of people may show up. So, it's a great deal, and if y'all get a chance to go on out there, please do. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Stuart. We now come to the...
Bill, I have something I'd like to say. I just want to thank Chief Smith and the firefighters that allowed me and took me on a boat ride, the new boat we got for floodwater rescues. It's a huge improvement. I've learned that before that, they were using rowboats with paddles and ropes to maneuver the river, and now we have a boat with a motor, and I'm very pleased with the way they handled it, and hopefully we never have to use it, but if we do, I feel confident. Thank you, chief.
Did, do I understand that you went in the water and they rescued you?
No, they tried to throw me in, but...
Oh, okay. Alright, alright.
I've got one real brief announcement that I'll be in trouble if I don't announce. So, I'm here at this meeting, and before anybody gets upset with me down the road, just understand that today's actually my anniversary, and so I'm sacrificing that to be here with all of you. So, anyways, that's it.
Ah, okay. Alright, alright. Now, the Visitors Citizens Forum, where you would speak, not to an issue that's on the agenda, but if you sign the forum and want to speak, do we have anyone? Okay.
My name is Robert Rand Russel. I represent the Hill Country Amateur Radio Club, and I would like to make this announcement that we are having our International Field Day on the 23rd and 24th of June, Saturday after next, at Our Lady of the Hills Athletic Complex on Peterson Farm Road, which is just off of Highway 27. This is an international event. It's been going on now for probably almost 100 years. It's an invitation for everyone. It's very important that a city or an entity have an emergency communication system, and that's what we do. We're ham radio operators. A lot of you all have relatives or have been a ham yourself. It's very interesting, a lot of fun, and we invite our elected officials to especially make this event, because this is a competitive program. We compete with people all over the world, and we accrue more points if we have elected officials. And that's for a purpose. It tightens the bond between our organization and the leaders of our community, and it's good for you all. It's good public exposure. The event starts at 1:00 PM Saturday, June the 23rd. It runs for 24 hours. You can come and go and visit. And what you'll see out there, antennas, electronic equipment, cables everywhere, generators running as if we are off the grid communication-wise. There will be two people operating each station. One will have the headphones on with a microphone or a Morse code key. There will be another person there logging, documenting the contact. We talk to people all over the world. We're classified as the size of the city and the population. Last year, we came in 23rd in the entire United States. We're hot, and we're going, and we enjoy having visitors come in. You get a chance to sit down, hear somebody talk from 1,500, 2,000, 10,000 miles away. It's not like using your cellphone. This is the equipment that you see right there. And there are several stations, several modes, Morse code, voice, data transmission with using computers, and just a lot of fun. It's come as you go. You don't have to sign in or do a secret handshake or anything of that nature. Just come out and enjoy yourself. It's a very comfortable place. It's under the pavilion where the basketball events are played from Our Lady of the Hills. Restrooms are there, plenty of parking, just a lot of fun. And that is what I have to present to you all, and I hope to see you out there. There'll be a lot of us. It will be amongst you that you know.
How many radio operators do we have in this area?
In the area, about 260. And our club, our club, our Hill Country Amateur Radio Club meets the first Thursday evening at the American Red Cross Building at 7:00 PM. First Thursday, that's our official meeting. Now, a lot of us get together Wednesday morning at the McDonald's next to Culvers near Walmart, and we like to get together and talk technical and tell lies and jokes, and we have a grand time. And they've hosted us for years, but it's a 100-year-old hobby. The Field Day is physical. We set up antennas, we roll cable, we do all kinds of stuff. It's a beehive, but at 1:00, the clock starts. We have 24 hours to gather as many contacts throughout the world as we can. It's fun.
Alright, good. Thank you.
That's it. Any further questions?
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
I gotta say, that was interesting how you pointed out you meet at the McDonald's next to the Culvers, just kind of you got two competitors in the same sentence. That was nice.
Well, I used to say McDonald's and Walmart, and people would go into store. That's what McDonald's is. I mean, it's the Culvers one, and we meet in the back in the playroom. We run all the kids out, all the parents out, and then we set up shop and start. We used to meet for a couple of hours. Lot of stories, lot of fun. Thank you all.
Okay. Alright, if we have no one else for the Citizens Forum, let's move to the Consent Agenda. And you will see it there.
Mayor, I'd like to pull A, B, and C off the consent agenda.
Okay, pull A, B, and C. Alright, and so we will... we will move then to D, E, F, and G. And, well, okay, 3H, 3I, all of those.
I'd make a motion that we pass 3D through I, through 3I as presented.
Okay, the motion is to go ahead and pass 3D through 3I. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, got a second? Alright, any further discussion? Okay, if you will vote at this time? Okay, passes 5:00. Alright, let's back up now and go with A, B, and C.
So, the 3A was just, I just had a question. It was more of a clarification than anything else. The special meeting that was 5:18, which I guess was Ms. Eichner's swearing-in, were approv... is there an echo? Anyways, we're approving minutes, and I thought that was actually just a special event. And do we really need to have it? Did we have...
No, it was a special meeting because of the can... because of the swearing-in, the oath.
But we weren't required to be there as a quorum, were we?
No, but you aren't for the canvas either. You're not required...
No, I mean, that was just my clarification. I was asking.
Yeah.
Alright.
And we can probably, I guess, can we pass all three of these together if I ask my questions and then just do that? Are we allowed to do that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I just had questions on the... oh, the 3B was the Recovery Community Coalition. Did we want, I don't know that we discussed this, but we talked about pulling the council members, like basically removing the liaisons, but had we actually discussed whether we wanted to keep the number of people on it at 15 or just drop it to 13? Had we actually... I guess I'm asking council if that was a question we were all okay with, because I don't know that we ever really discussed this.
Well, I thought we had two citizens that we were gonna replace, the two we were taking off.
Right, I'm just saying, if that was the direction we had given, I mean, it's on the consent agenda, so I'm just asking the question. And so, if everybody was okay with it, then we'd just leave it as it was presented. I just was bringing it up. And then 3C was the River Hill Traffic Circle, for lack of a better term, beautification. And I wasn't really clear, so the 2,500 that we're giving to it, the, I guess the agenda bill says it was an amount of money that we got from terminating a contract that we did...
Right, so we were proceeding with the engineered design to remove the centers and then put a cap over with a curb.
Okay.
In the middle of that, we were contacted by the Homeowners Association, a board member, and they asked if they could submit a proposal to beautify it. So, as part of the deal, what they asked for is that we would, we would help support their beautification effort up to the amount that we didn't spend on the original contract to have the work done to remove it, the center.
Okay. And this contract that we're looking at is essentially a five-year deal with, like, options. So, if either side decides to terminate it, who does maintain that? How does that work?
We would have to work that out.
Okay.
So, this is very similar to the agreements that's already in place for the summit for landscaping in Eastmore.
Okay. Alright, so anyways, those were my questions. So, I guess if nobody has any objections, I would make a motion to approve 3A, B, and C.
Mayor Blackburn, I was going to ask to pull 3C to address it. Would I do that before?
Oh, she'd be doing it now.
You speak on the turn.
Yeah, you'd do it now. We'll go ahead and vote on A and B, and then come to C.
That works. So, I'll just modify my motion to approve 3A and 3B.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Alright, any other discussion? Then we're ready to vote. Okay, and it passes 5:00. Okay, Ms. McKay, would you talk to us about 3C?
Peggy McKay, P.O. Box 291464, Kerrville. River Hill Boulevard dates back to the 1970s and is now classified as a collector, a collector for traffic between Highway 16 and Highway 173. At one time, there was a load limit posted because the road bed was not constructed to accommodate high-volume or heavy-vehicle traffic, such as the 18-wheelers that are delivering beverages to businesses on one or the other of these highways. As 534 has developed, traffic is only going to increase on River Hill Boulevard. With this pass-through traffic, we experienced speeders. Roundabouts were added at three intersections to resolve this problem. For the most part, traffic from Highway 16 to 173 can, with one exception, maintain their speed around the roundabouts. If traveling in the other direction, some find it easier to deal with the roundabouts by using the opposite side of the road. As one resident said, "Between the roundabouts, it's Katy bar the door." The stop signs were as effective and maybe a better and safer alternative. After the fifth crash at one of the roundabouts, I understood the traffic engineer recommended that all three roundabouts be reduced to that lower level and the center filled with concrete to satisfy safety concerns. After reviewing this week's council agenda, I learned that the River Hill Property Owners Association has worked with the city to use that center of each roundabout as a garden-type area for plants and/or flowers. I'm having difficulty understanding how this enhances the safety factor. This change will be an attraction, but for the curious deer that will check out the new food source or pull it out, an added traffic hazard it will become. Adding a garden-type feature to the middle of an intersection of a high-volume roadway will not promote safety. Not all residents of River Hill are members of the River Hill P.O.A. Two of the 12 residents I queried about this issue are members, but none of us had any knowledge of this plan. The River Hill P.O.A. Board appears to present itself as a spokesperson for the subdivision, an action that does not have the backing of the residents, particularly those residing on River Hill Boulevard, and are most affected by this issue. There was no poll of residents for this opinion, or for their opinion. The board has assumed authority they do not have, and I am requesting a no vote on item 3C.
City manager, do you have a comment?
I mean, I explained that the situation was that we were approached by the board to do this. I don't think it poses any more safety hazard, because they're talking about putting in, instead of a curb, it would be more of a natural-looking rock feature that would be the same height, and then basically cactus in the middle. And so, they're willing to maintain it if it dies, or if it's run over, they would replace it. So, you know, I don't see it a safety hazard.
Okay, alright. Any further discussion? Okay. Do I hear a motion in regard to 3C?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept 3C.
Okay, we got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Alright, any further discussion? Okay, what is the vote?
It popped up there. It was 5:00.
It passed 5:0.
Okay, 5:0?
Yes.
Alright, passed 5:0. Okay, that's the end of the consent agenda. Let's go to Public Hearing and Ordinances. And 4A is a public hearing and first reading of an ordinance adopting Kerrville 2050 as the comprehensive plan for the city of Kerrville, Texas. The plan is adopted pursuant to Chapter 213 of the Texas Local Government Code and will give the growth and development of the city, and will guide the growth and development of the city, defining the relationship of the plan to the city's development regulations, containing a cumulative clause containing a savings and severability clause, replacing ordinance number 2002-14 and all other ordinances, or parts of ordinances that amended it and providing for other matters related to the subject. Alright, Drew?
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council. This is a public hearing and first reading ordinance for the comprehensive plan Kerrville 2050 replaces the 2002 comprehensive plan that was updated in 2008. Planning Commission gave their recommendation to you following the recommendation of the comprehensive plan steering committee. And with that, I will introduce our consultant from Kimley Horn, Mark Bowers, and Monica
Thank you, Drew. As Drew said, my name is Mark Bowers. I am a, I'm the project manager for the consultant team with Kimley Horn. I'm a planner and landscape architect, and with me this evening to make part of the presentation is Monica Hyde from Prologue Planning. Before we start with the formal presentation, I just want to tell you, Mayor Blackburn and members of council, steering committee, and residents of Kerrville, how appreciative we are for the opportunity to facilitate this comprehensive plan process with you. It's been an amazing experience for us as a consultant team, and we just really appreciate the faith that you put in us to be able to work through this with you and the citizens of Kerrville. So, we have a very brief overview of the presentation. Essentially, we're going to go through our comprehensive plan process, give you an overview of the comprehensive plan components, and then turn it back over to you for a public hearing. So, as we talk through the comprehensive plan process, there are several key things that we want to highlight. The purpose of a comprehensive plan is to address the basic issues and requirements that will affect the community's ability to plan for and achieve its vision for 2050. This plan is going to be used to inform capital improvements planning. It will be there to help coordinate and guide establishment of development regulations, and specifically zoning and subdivision ordinances, and it will be used as a basis for the review of zoning and development applications. Monica will talk about that in a little bit more detail in a few minutes. So, we've shown this actual graphic, I think we showed this to the city council at our interview last September. Essentially, we believe very strongly in the process, the vision for this plan needs to be built upon the physical attributes of this community. So, we've talked to you and your citizens quite a bit about the hillsides, the river, the natural beauty, and how this plan needs to take advantage of those types of things as we look for opportunities for development. But it also needs to have an understanding of the market potential, and what are the types of products that the real estate marketplace would be delivering in this area, as well as what are the types of things you want to see them deliver, and how can you start to impact that? And then finally, community aspirations, which to us is a key component. We believe very strongly that you may have physical opportunities and development opportunities in a community, but if the community doesn't support it, it's not the right plan for the community. So, we work very carefully through this process to try to balance those three things to come up with a vision for Kerrville. So, that public and committee process that was developed, along the top line, you see the overall work process that took place. We started off early on with a community retreat where we got quite a bit of community input on several topics, but one of the specific products that came out of the retreat were multiple maps that were developed by each table in the room. We then moved forward with some common themes, working with the steering committee that came out of each of those maps. We identified what those common trends were amongst those maps in order to start to refine the future land use plan for the community. And then we worked with the committee to, in refining those three themes, to come up with alternative scenarios. We developed three alternative scenarios for Kerrville that really started to identify very distinct and different future outcomes for the community. Along that same timeline, along the bottom row, you see the subcommittee input about the time we were looking at alternative scenarios. We had multiple subcommittees looking at evaluation criteria, what are the measurements we wanted to take on related to each of the scenarios to be able to evaluate them and give information to the community to make informed decisions about what were those aspects of the plans that were most appropriate to move forward. We then went into a couple of community open houses held on consecutive evenings, shared those ramifications on the three scenarios, and got pretty clear feedback from the community on what were the aspects of each scenario that were preferred, that they wanted to see incorporated into a preferred scenario. We brought that back to the steering committee, and about that same time, the subcommittees began their work on guiding principles and action items that would support the overall plan. That process that was worked through with city staff, essentially if there were action items that came through that process, they had to be unanimously supported in each committee before they could move forward and make it into the plan. We then went into, again, working with the steering committee, looking at land use and mobility components, took those components back to some community open houses here back in April, right here. in April, right here in City Hall, got additional community input on those, made some modifications to them, brought those back along with the rest of the comprehensive plan components to the steering committee, and essentially we're now at the public hearing process and still receiving community input on this plan, which is the critical aspect of gaining that support for the plan. So, this overall comprehensive plan, it was led by a comprehensive plan advisory committee, or steering committee it should say. Forty-two member committee provided feedback in nine separate meetings. There were seven comprehensive plan subcommittees, approximately seventy individuals on those subcommittees met in three rounds of meetings. And so, this comprehensive plan is the result from stakeholder interviews. We had forty individual and small group interview sessions with more than one hundred participants that were interviewed at the very beginning of the process. Six community events, we talked about the State of the City address, the community retreat, which had a hundred and forty attendees. February open houses had two hundred and fifty attendees, April open houses, a hundred and twenty-five attendees, and two online surveys. Somebody asked in the last meeting, you know, based upon other communities where we've worked, how did, what did we think about this level of attendance? It's really based upon what we've seen in other communities, it's outstanding. We've been in communities with a million population that at some of their meetings did not have the type of attendance that you had here in Curville. It's a very significant thing that this community should be proud of. And then this plan is also the result of six community events, again, the State of the City address, oh, I touched on that already, sorry, I thought that was a slide advanced. And then additional community information and education came through the State of the City address, Curville 2050 website, email distribution, Facebook and Twitter posts, and periodic newsletters. So, we're going to start to give you an overview of the comprehensive plan components that are in, that are a part of the report. I'll try to be as concise as I can, but try to hit as many highlights as I can through the process. So, the number one thing that we did through the process is started off, well, let me go back. Well, I think I stopped it, but we started with the community brand. And just in coming up with the brand for this comprehensive plan process, it was very important. We started off with a lot of blue colors relating to the river. We heard very clearly that it's not just about the natural aspects of the river, but it's the natural aspects of the open spaces and the hillsides. And so, that brand started to work in some green colors as well. The brand was also focused on coming together. The community really saw this plan and process, and the steering committee, is a process that would bring the community together to form a common vision for Curville. And then finally, some of the line work you see was really intended to start to form the K for Curville. So, you'll see that that was incorporated into all aspects of this comprehensive plan process and the report, and now it's going to go. So, we did an overall video related to that as well, and really the tagline was "Your voice, your city is a part of the plan." So, the next thing that we did is we really started to drill down into some of the community priorities, and those carried on from the very beginning of the process, all the way through continuing to gauge the community's support for these priorities. Those top priorities were properly planning for and designing, constructing, and maintaining Curville's infrastructure. That priority in itself really had a focus, provided a focus for the inward look back at the community rather than continued future expansion. Focusing on quality-of-life assets to attract economic development, capitalizing on the Guadalupe River for the benefit of the community, developing attainable, affordable housing in the community, that was one of the key things we heard throughout the process. Bringing new jobs to Curville, creating an active, attractive, or active, attractive, and connected downtown, improving tourism infrastructure. Through the surveys we did in multiple venues, we asked people to rank these things as to being somewhat important or very important, all the way down to very unimportant. And so, this ranking that you're seeing a hundred percent said that properly planning for, designing, constructing, and maintaining Curville's infrastructure was either important or somewhat important. So, through the process then, we also went through a series of open-ended questions in the community about what that vision for Curville should be in 2050, what were some key words to describe that. Through that process, we created some word art that's still on display out in the foyer of this building. But through the process of working with the steering committee, the vision statement was refined to "Curville will be a vibrant, welcoming, and inclusive community that respects and protects the natural environment that surrounds it, seeks to attract economic growth and development, provides opportunities for prosperity, personal enrichment, and intellectual growth for people of all ages, and does so while preserving the small-town charm, heritage, arts, and culture of the community." And again, this was through a series of venues where we got feedback from the community to arrive at this final vision statement. So, we're going to go into the next chapter, which is the Future Land Use Plan.
And before Mark gets into a more detailed review of the Future Land Use Plan, which as you know is a very important part of the comprehensive plan, I just wanted to remind you of a couple of things and maybe go into just a little bit more detail on aspects of those things that we haven't really focused on in the past, I don't think. So, just as a reminder, a comprehensive plan is not a zoning ordinance. A Future Land Use Plan map is not a zoning map. They are different things. A comprehensive plan is very long-term in nature, Curville 2050, not Curville 2018, and it's also more general, whereas a zoning ordinance is short-term, it's in effect today, and it's very specific. You can go to a specific piece of property and determine what the zoning is today. The Future Land Use Plan designation that's on a piece of property does not rezone that property, nor does it require a property owner to do anything specific at this point in time. Nothing need change as a result of the adoption of the comprehensive plan. As long as the use that's underway on the property is either conforming today, or legally non-conforming, or grandfathered in, whatever's happening there can go on forever as long as all other applicable codes are observed. So, if somebody's running an operation, even though it's not conforming to existing zoning, if it's been there for a number of years and is grandfathered in, it can continue until all of us are dead unless somebody decides to do something different, and then it's a rezoning would be required, and then it's when the comprehensive plan kind of comes to bear. So, if a person wants to do something different with their property, that person, their heirs, a new owner, then the comprehensive plan provides some very important direction for what can happen there in the future, when the change does occur. And that, those decisions have been made through this process involving the entire community, or at least with the invitation of the input from the entire community. So, the comprehensive plan and the Future Land Use Plan are very helpful pieces of information to somebody who wants to know what can be done with a piece of property when they decide something else needs to happen there. That way, nobody has to guess what it is that the city or the community would like to see happen. It's already laid out. Sorry, I shouldn't move the slide forward, but that, the "what if" somebody wants to do something different, that's what that slide addresses. So, I don't think we've really, we've really talked about that in great detail in the past, so hopefully that's something to sort of internalize.
Can I ask a little question? So, the one that says, "But if one of your current landowners or heirs," whatever, "do something different can be as small as modifying their building," correct?
It's possible.
I mean, I understand this is just the plan, not the zoning, but modifying the building could trigger the, the, out of grandfathered.
If they modify the building, it depends on how your zoning ordinance, not your comprehensive plan, is worded. It's a zoning ordinance issue, not a comp plan issue.
Right.
Okay, so for each of the chapters, I'm going to go through some similar information. So, one of those things in common, we're going to go through the chapter outline, and then we'll drill down into a little bit more detail on some of the chapters. So, the first is the land use chapter. That outline, all of these have an introduction. It was important in this case that we talk about the previous plan, direction, and actions, because so much of this plan is built upon some of the things that occurred in that previous plan. It has information related to growth and population trends, place types, which is distinctive to this plan, alternative growth scenarios, and then that Future Land Use Plan, strategic catalyst areas, again, which is something distinct to this plan, I'll talk about in a bit more detail in a moment. And then all of these chapters have guiding principles and sample action items that are a part of them. So, the previous plan direction, your two thousand eight plan essentially established commercial development along major corridors, had a strong focus on the central business district, generally called for low-diss city residential and the extraterritorial jurisdiction, the ETJ, and focused on greenfield development rather than reinvestment in older areas of the community. Now, somebody in the last meeting, P and Z, I'm going to do this on a couple of maps, they asked that I orient folks in the audience. So, this is essentially Interstate Ten, the blue line through right here. This is State Highway sixteen, I'm going to try to follow it, and then this is the river coming through this portion of the community. So, that is the two thousand eight plan that we have on the screen. So, since the adoption of that plan, several of the projects and initiatives have already been accomplished. There was the development of the Holdsworth Drive, started in two thousand five, which included the extension of utilities to the Harper Interchange. That really opened up quite a bit of area for new investment, new development in the community, extended water and wastewater utilities along the Harper Corridor. It also established a new water distribution main, new groundwater well. And I guess the key takeaway of this is that major development areas envisioned, moving outward from the center city, have essentially been envisioned. So, those areas for development from the two thousand eight plan have been ready for that development. At this point, those investments have been made, infrastructure projects have been put in place, and it's time for the private sector now to come in to start to respond to that with new developments in those areas.
Excuse me, can I pause you right there?
Sure.
Is it just us, or are you all freezing as well?
Yeah.
Okay, can somebody, is it that thing? Can we adjust the thermostat? Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, I was freezing too.
Could I point out something now, too? But, you know, it's just obvious to me, it looks like we had some really success stories out of the two thousand eight plan, which is something to remember as we go forward. Now, everything was approved or implemented, but the Holdsworth Drive and the Harper Road, so some things, you know, the plan has some parts of it that were very successful.
There were a lot of specific action items that, and really, as you look at it, those major infrastructure projects that were needed to enable that development to occur were accomplished.
Which came out of a plan, so.
Yeah, so that plan is really a basis for this plan in most parts of the city. So, we talk about the relationship of this plan to the previous plan. One more time, I'll orient you on the map, and that should be it for all of the maps. So, essentially, this is Interstate Ten through this portion of the community here. Again, we have State Highway sixteen coming through right here, and then the blue that you see through this portion of the map is the Guadalupe River. So, this particular plan, the relationship, what it did is it translated previous planned land uses to place types. What do we mean by that? We took a look at the land use pattern, we created place types, which is just another version of a land use, although it has a little bit more flexibility for property owners to develop products that aren't specifically identified within the land use plan for the area. We took a look at what's on the ground, what had been built since the last plan. So, really, this plan is in effect in all of the colored areas focusing in on the land uses that have either been developed since the last plan, are already in place, or the ones that are still envisioned for the community. The second thing this plan does is it identifies locations for strategic catalyst areas, a key focus of the new plan. So, each of those white areas that you see that are circled with numbers inside of them are essentially those strategic catalyst areas where this plan is suggesting the community look back inside of itself, refocus with improving existing infrastructure, or providing additional infrastructure that may be lacking within those areas. So, we talked a little bit about the place types. This is one example, this is the downtown place type. Each place type identifies the character and intent. Those intent stations, or statements are very important to the process of looking at zoning in the future, to be able to understand what was the vision from the comprehensive plan, not only from the place type standpoint, but where this talks about what was intended to happen within each of these areas. The land use considerations, we identify the primary land uses, but also secondary land uses that might be attracted to the area that would be supportive of those primary uses that you're trying to attract. In other words, we're saying it's okay if there are some of these other uses to occur within these areas, even though we don't have a specific color for them on the map. You would expect them to be there to support it. And then we talk about lot sizes, the types of parcels that would be expected within each of these areas. As we talk about the strategic catalyst areas, this is an example from Area Two. Each area describes the defining characteristic. When we say catalyst, we mean that there's something there, or the potential for something to be there, whether it's Shriner University, or in this case, it happens to be the hospital, to be able to say, there is something happening there where we can start to create additional developments that help that primary catalyst become even more successful for the community and have supporting developments. With a hospital, for instance, you may have supporting uses, certainly with labs and doctors' offices, but sometimes you don't think about supportive housing for some of the employees of the hospital that could be within walking distance of the hospital to reduce automobile trips in the area. Each of these will look at the allowable place types, place type distinctions, the size, developable sites, so that blue crosshatching that you see on there is really indicating those areas that are the prime development sites in each of these, residents, jobs, and then one additional thing, where you see the green colors, that's really starting to indicate some of the severe slopes, where there may be challenges to development, just so that you can have those in mind as you look at each of these areas. So, here's a side-by-side comparison of the two plans. Again, the distinct difference is we're now calling the land uses place types. We've taken a look at new development that's occurred since the last plan was adopted, and put appropriate place types in place that are in alignment with what's on the ground, and then we've identified these strategic catalyst areas. Economic development, I'll go through this one a bit more quickly. Again, the key elements of this chapter are the current economic development initiatives, focus on the people that you're trying to attract from an economic development standpoint, sites and buildings available for development, incentives and business support in place, the overall infrastructure, not only the economic development infrastructure, as well as real infrastructure on the ground, quality of life, market opportunities, and then finally guiding principles and sample actions. So, on economic development, in each of these tables, you'll see that there are some darker headings. Those are where we've grouped some of the key guiding principles for each of these. So, you see on this one, it's approach to economic development, economic development infrastructure, and key industries and assets. And then under key industries and assets, one of the key action items is create an identity for Curville, or I'm sorry, key guiding principle, create an identity for Curville as a capital or hub of the hill country. So, these are all of the guiding principles associated with the economic development chapter. All of these then also appear in the implementation matrix. Housing, three key aspects, current housing conditions, market opportunities, and then the guiding principles and sample actions. In this case, we only had one overall heading, it was housing and neighborhoods. Keep in mind, housing was something that was not a chapter that was going to be, it was not originally a planned component that we were going to look at, but it became something that was not a plan component that we were going to look at. but it became so important in this community as we moved forward. Everyone we talked to, it kept coming up, that it did become a standalone chapter in the report. So a couple of the guiding principles, maintain the quality and value of existing neighborhoods, balance the city's tax base, shifting the burden from residential property owners, really focusing in in the strategic catalyst areas on additional commercial and other types of development to help diversify that tax base.
Mark, would you say more about H2, maintain the quality and value of existing neighborhoods?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So, one of the things that, and again, these came out of the subcommittees, but one of the things that we've seen in other communities is maintaining that quality and value is a key aspect of what really helps neighborhoods stay strong moving forward. What we've seen is, in some communities, there starts to be a lack of focus on building structures, and in some cases, those structures become abandoned or fall down. And so the key is to try to get in there and make sure that you're maintaining those structures in a way that they can be maintained and remain viable neighborhoods going forward. I think that's one of the key aspects that was highlighted here. We've worked in other communities and worked in neighborhoods where that process had already occurred, and there were a lot of vacant lots. And then it becomes a process of needing to work with existing property owners, and if they don't have the money to be able to take care of their homes, oftentimes we'll work with a faith-based community to be able to bring resources to help that happen, whether it's Harps and Hammers or other organizations, to improve the existing buildings, and then working to bring in new buildings on the vacant lots so that new families can move back into the neighborhood. And sometimes, a couple of generations that had left a couple of generations ago may come back to a community that they had left behind many years before.
Thank you.
So, community and neighborhood character, placemaking, existing conditions in the Curville 2050 Plan, placemaking in strategic catalyst areas, and then guiding principles and sample actions. So, some of the key, the overriding aspects that were used for organizing these were entitled a community for all, neighborhood appearance and upkeep, and neighborhood connections. So, one of the things we heard throughout the process under a community for all is promote aging in place. We heard that multiple times, that people are attached to their church, to their neighborhood, and they want options to be able to stay in that area when their children leave home, when they become elderly, either staying in that home or even having other products available so that you maintain that sense of community through the aging in place. Under neighborhood appearance and upkeep, one of them was establish clear regulations for code enforcement and zoning, educate the public on the value and importance of property maintenance, and focus on proactive court enforcement and maintaining minimum property standards. And then finally, neighborhood connections. One of the key aspects was celebrate and honor the character of each neighborhood and its culture, revitalize neighborhoods. That's where I was talking a little bit earlier about reinvesting, and if there are vacant lots, try to get compatible development on those lots to reinvest in the neighborhood, create gathering places within them while avoiding the displacement of citizens in their cultures in the neighborhood. So the next one is mobility and transportation. There's a couple of key items, introduction, the thoroughfare plan, which I'll go over in a bit more detail after Monica speaks to you, and then guiding principles and sample action items.
All right, just as the future land use plan addresses the future use of land, both public and private domestic, thoroughfare plan addresses the street network of the future community. So it supports mobility, connectivity and roadway capacity. It supports safety, so the safe movement of people and goods through the community. And when I say people, I mean not only automobiles, but pedestrians and people using other non-motorized forms of transportation. And then it also supports economic development or community growth. So the thoroughfare plan addresses generally where streets should be located, and I do mean generally. Basically, it indicates connections that seem to be required, not necessarily the exact location for those connections. It indicates what type of street should be built to accommodate the type of development that's expected on the future land use plan, so you see those two things are working together. And when I say what type of street, I'm talking about how many lanes, how much right-of-way would be required to accommodate those lanes, and then finally, how to accommodate pedestrians and bicyclists where that's appropriate in the city's opinion.
I have a question on that. Say, there's a development that's going to happen in town, a large development, and the thoroughfare is going through their property. How do we, do we come to them and say, how does that affect them? How do we initiate that and get the road?
Well, your subdivision ordinance should have a provision in it that says, in fact, virtually requires you to get the necessary right-of-way as indicated on the approved thoroughfare plan as part of the development process, the subdivision approval process. So that's how it typically happens with development. Now, not always, sometimes there are situations where something, you know, where something's going to happen beyond, you know, so there's undeveloped property and then a development is proposed beyond that. So then you, then you work with the property owner that's involved in between the development and the current roadway, and you see what you can do to get that necessary connection. Sometimes, I've seen arrangements where the city builds the roadway and the developer repays them, or, I mean, there's a number of ways that it can happen, but pretty much, it is typically initiated because there's a development request and the city has the authority to get the right-of-way that's necessary under the thoroughfare plan.
I know that was a hot topic, the thoroughfare plan.
Okay, yeah. And in fact, in a second, I'll cover a couple of other points related to that. But I do want to then take the opportunity to reemphasize that the land use plan and the thoroughfare plan work together to achieve the vision that the community has laid out for 2050. Now, you'll notice that the thoroughfare plan does not specify a timeframe within which any of these improvements are to be made, and that's because it's going to depend on factors such as when development occurs. So, when the time is right, how do the roads get built? Well, that happens because there's a capital improvement project on the books. So that may be a city-initiated project, could be a county, could be a state project, because you guys have county roads and state roads, state highways here. So it's on the drawing board already. The plan allows the agency to anticipate what kind of funding is going to be required, but it's basically a government-funded project. It could be 100% developer-funded. If a developer's building a neighborhood and the local street's a street that's probably out in front of your house, that was a developer-funded roadway. And arterial is probably perhaps shared by the city and the developer in terms of the construction costs. And that's the partnership aspect. Because having a roadway that accommodates the type of traffic that a development is going to generate, that's very much of interest to the developer, and it's also very much of interest to the city. The developer's project is not going to be successful without it. The city doesn't want to have, want to take the entire burden of the additional traffic onto itself. So those partnerships are created in order to address those situations.
So continuing on into the mobility and transportation component. Essentially, we went through a process of developing that overall thoroughfare plan, starting off looking at existing connectivity issues, and based upon the plan and where future development would be occurring, saying, what are the connections that you would desire to make? We looked at things related to some of the issues that were in place that would be, make them difficult, such as topography, the floodplains, private gated streets, and alignments with connections compatible with future development. This overall plan that was developed was modified multiple times. As we were, we had the meetings in April to receive feedback on this overall thoroughfare plan. We made some modifications. We had this plan on display at two of the steering committee meetings. People made additional comments, raised additional concerns. And so, this plan has been vetted and changed multiple times through this process. The other thing that we've done within this chapter is looked at context-sensitive streets. The key thing I want to tell you about this is that, the idea of context-sensitive streets is that one type of street doesn't fit every application. So, your previous plan, essentially, there's a cross-section on the right-hand side of this slide that shows the typical cross-sections that you would have for a secondary arterial. And the assumption was that that type of street would be built everywhere on your plan. You called for a secondary arterial. What this plan has done is said, okay, instead of that, a secondary arterial or a downtown collector in this case, if you have 60 feet of right-of-way, depending on that context, you develop that 60 feet in different ways. So for instance, State Highway 16 is a good example. As you're out in the I-10 area, it may take on one context, and it may have a slightly different configuration when it comes into downtown, just because it's in a different type of facility. And the needs of pedestrians, bicycles and automobiles is somewhat different within each of those areas. So we do have multiple cross-sections that identify how you can treat these streets in different ways depending on that surrounding context. So the mobility and transportation implementation, again, the three key categories, safety and quality of life, maximizing the existing street network and connectivity and transportation options. One of the guiding principles, place a high priority on the maintenance of existing streets. Again, that inward focus, again, on existing community. Water, wastewater and drainage, the chapter has water supply and water quality. Wastewater management would be a section, the stormwater management is a section. And then finally, guiding principles and action items. The, again, the same headings that were some of the chapter headings exist here, with the exception of education and innovation. And some of the topics there were expand ongoing education efforts regarding water issues and encourage water conservation through the use of xeriscate and low irrigation, low maintenance landscape techniques. Again, much of this is focused on how do we take the most advantage of the water that we have in place in the area. Public facilities and services, very simple, is public services, public facilities, and guiding principles and sample actions. For this particular chapter, efficient and effective service delivery and public facilities in the built-in natural environment are the two headings. And then, a couple of the action items, place the highest priority on public safety, so that would be police, fire and EMS. And be thoughtful when considering land uses and provide facilities and services that promote and enhance local parks, green spaces, and the river trail. And as we talk about that, parks, open space and the river corridor. Key chapter, it's existing conditions and plan implications, guiding principles and sample actions. This is about several key things, respect for the natural environment. The subcommittee came up with a lot of action items related to that. Regulations and funding and connecting people in places. And then one of the guiding principles under connecting people in places is focus on connecting businesses, neighborhoods, major destinations, and other amenities with parks, open spaces and the river corridor. Those are really areas where, if you design them properly, they can bring the community together. Downtown revitalization, a focus on investing in downtown and then guiding principles and action items. In this case, the overriding organizing elements were the Curville character, gathering places and events, mobility and connectivity, and downtown investment and reinvestment. Over Curville character, the key item was create a living room for the community and a front door for visitors, a full-service destination that attracts anchor users and increase residential and mixed-use development in downtown. Under downtown investment and reinvestment, promote preservation and reinvestment in single-family and historic components in the areas around and near downtown. So again, reinvesting in those existing neighborhoods that exist in downtown. And then finally, implementation. And the chapter itself focuses on guiding principles, themes and concepts, action items, and then several of the subbullets. And we'll talk a little bit about each of those in more detail. So the matrix overview really focuses in on timing and relative public sector costs related to each of these implementation action items that came out of the subcommittees. And then, that example of the matrix with just one area, this is, it says downtown revitalization. The dark blue is one of the guiding principles that I just read off to you, creating the living room for the community and the front door for visitors. That was the example I just showed you. So what it has is each action item listed underneath that. The party that would be responsible, or parties, because this is about partnerships in the community on many of these. The timing, which, in this case, these are showing short-term and ongoing, relative public sector costs, again, those dollar signs would indicate the different levels of investment. And then the strategic catalyst area supported, as well as the priorities addressed. Again, going back to those very first priorities we shared with you at the beginning of this presentation. So, and then finally, the Curville Planning and Zoning Commission. This similar presentation, almost exact presentation, was given to the Planning and Zoning Commission last Thursday on June 7th in a public hearing. And following the closing of the public hearing, the group discussed the plan and community comments and unanimously recommended the plan for adoption by city council. Now, there was an additional paper that was given to council with some modifications to the document itself. So Monica will go through a few of those that I believe are highlighted in gray. Many of these are typos or those types of things. If you can imagine a document this size, we're trying to make sure that we cleaned up everything we can. But Monica, if you can walk through those.
And I've summarized those gray highlighted items from the list on the slides, so hopefully that will help. And honestly, the majority of them were quality control kinds of items, capitalizations, punctuation, that sort of thing. But there are a few that we wanted to bring to your attention. I think I might have gotten one slide ahead of myself. There we go. A few that we wanted to bring to your attention that are a little bit more substantive. For example, on page 13, it was brought to our attention that we were kind of consistently referring to a two-mile ETJ. Well, that's because right now, your population is very close to the limit where you will break over from a one-mile ETJ to a two-mile ETJ. For sure, that's going to happen before 2050. So we decided it was smartest for us to go ahead and deal with the expanded ETJ. We wanted to add a graphic to the document, the chapter on the community-based involvement that shows a public input timeline. As we talked about earlier in the presentation, you guys have been so blessed with a large amount of community interest, and you deserve credit for that. So we want to do a little graphic that kind of pulses out through the nine-month process to show where all these community involvement activities and opportunities took place. It'll look better than that, I promise you. Then we also want to, on page 41, we did just a little bit of a modification to the definition of the entertainment mixed-use place type. It was not clear, I appreciate someone bringing that to our attention. So what we're saying now is lot sizes will vary greatly based upon land use and that the goal is to create a district that sustains itself with daytime and nighttime population and activity. And then on page 157, in the mobility chapter, we wanted to use some better examples of traffic calming techniques. We want to talk about curb extensions, that's really the more common term. We referred to them in the draft document, I think, as bump outs. The real word, the real term is curb extensions. And median islands, diverters, partial street closure. So things that made more sense, I think, to people that are not transportation engineers. And then there were a couple of photos, and we just modified the captions to those as well. And when we get into the implementation matrix, we forgot to include the legend that goes along with the matrix that had all the abbreviations and the... along with the matrix that had all the abbreviations, and the slide that was up there just a little bit ago about what one-dollar sign, two-dollar signs, all that means. We've got that plugged in there now, or want to get that plugged in with your permission. And then we noticed that there were two instances where some of the cells were left blank. I think that was just in the formatting, the change from Microsoft Word to a different type of Word processing format that we left out. One action item had to do with the park dedication ordinance, and one guiding principle space was blank. It had to do with vertical mixed-use in the downtown area, so we reinserted that language. And then finally, there was some sensitivity on the part of the Steering Committee about references that we had to standards and requirements, so what we wanted to do was change those to guidelines or standards, so it's at the discretion of the council and the ordinance that's ultimately adopted as to whether those types of items become guidelines or standards. So our ask would be that after close of the public hearing and all, if the council is ready to forward, you know, this item for preparation of an ordinance based on the Plan Commission's action or Planning and Zoning Commission's action, that you would do so inclusive of that list of edits that's dated June the eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, that I've just summarized here in terms of any substantive issues. So with that, I think we're ready to turn it back over to the council for the public hearing process.
Okay. Do I have the speaker forms?
Can I ask Mark a couple of questions, though, just as a confirmation about what we just did? So a couple of things. One, I do commend you guys for, I remember the interview, and one of the reasons that I was selecting you all was because of your approach to essentially doing the best we can to open it up to the public as far as interest goes. But you mentioned at the beginning of your talk that this is a public hearing, and you all aren't afraid of public hearing having some input that actually modifies the plan, right? I mean, this is an expected aspect to a public hearing, correct?
We, yeah, typically, a public hearing is, it's part of the planning process.
Right. So, and then the other thing is just one question of why at the subcommittee level, was it a unanimous vote required to put an action item on the plan, but not a unanimous vote of the Steering Committee to bring it forward in the plan?
And I'm not sure why at the subcommittee level.
When the council adopted the resolution to create the committees, they kind of set out the general ground rules, and it was to be by consensus, and the definition of that was to basically have unanimous. And so consensus is a hybrid of kind of opposing views or differences, and then they come together for one common recommendation. And that happened on virtually every single subcommittee with some very lively debate and coming to compromise to the language that you see before you here today. At the Steering Committee level, there really wasn't a lot of voting going on, except for at the very, very end, when it was recommended, there was some polling going on to get some general indications, and then that polling then generated conversation, and as a result of that conversation, there were modifications made to the plan. So it was a tool used to try to get to that consensus, which I think we achieved in the process.
Okay, but you understand why I'm asking the question? Because basically, minority, a one-person minority would have ruled the decision on the subcommittee, but a one-person minority did not, they got overruled by the majority at the Steering Committee level, right?
Well, at the Steering Committee level, again, the keypad polling was truly polling and not a vote. So the intent was to understand where we had issues, to drill down, and for those that were on the Steering Committee, you'll recall, what we would do is drill down and say, are there comments, are there things you'd like us to try to address in this plan? And I think the plan we've developed tried to address as many of the things we could identify.
No fault, that was just curiosity question.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. Do we have speaker forms? What?
Should be showing up there, I guess. Is there a speaker?
Yeah, no speakers.
Let's hit done, hit done up there. Well, he's not showing them. He's on the right item, I mean, he's on the, there you go, yeah, sorry.
Well, do you have the manual copies? Maybe we could actually use them, those papers, you know.
Yeah, I'll just take the papers.
Oh, you gotta, you gotta open them. I guess you gotta actually say the public hearing.
Okay. Public hearing beginning at seven fifteen, and, well, without the list of speakers, I'm going to start with Walt Kerneig.
Bob Waller.
Bob Waller.
She went ahead and put Bob Waller on there.
Ah, got you, okay.
And run on up there, because they started the clock.
All right, thank you.
We'll give you some extra minutes.
My name is Bob Waller, I live at thirty-three Antelope Trail, Kerrville. I've also been the chair of the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, as well as the chair for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Let me preface my remarks by saying many participated in this process, many did not, and didn't get a full feel of how this plan was developed. I'm disappointed that over recent days, some people are using fear tactics, taking things out of context to create anxiety and stir up trouble within some of the groups that this plan is really designed to benefit. The point of contention has been the word gentrification. It's been used, and like people knew what it was. I don't think I ever heard of it until this week. Gentrification, according to Webster's dictionary, converting an aging neighborhood into a more fluent one, as by remodeling homes. Also, the word that's being used is displacement, and I think it's being used not in the letter or the spirit of this document. Our goal over the next thirty years is to move our community forward in a positive, planned way. Is this plan, or any long-range plan, perfect? No. But by allowing public input on numerous occasions, this has been going on for nine months, and you have all kinds of ways to access what was going on. Input on numerous occasions to come to a majority consensus is what created Kerrville twenty fifty. Give the participants and yourselves a lot of credit for developing a plan for a community that ourselves, our children, and grandchildren can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Jana Colgate, one ninety-five Redbird Loop, Center Point. As one that lives downriver, this has been an interesting presentation, because of the words that we're using of respect and protect the natural environment, that the river is very, very important to the plan for Kerrville. But yet, the area eleven, which is on twenty-seven, leading from Center Point into Kerrville, from Kerrville to Center Point, is designated as, or the potential designation, of commercial industrial. And right now, when you drive through that area, it is heavily industrialized. Martin Marietta on the river. When you look at the proposed land use, and it extends with the perhaps growth of Kerrville and the ETJ, you're going to encompass more of the aggregate mining, and currently, there is now a hot mixed asphalt processing plant that has been constructed. So when you talk about the changes for future land use, I would ask that you look at how to go back and protect the river. To, all of, I mean, I read, I have all of the action items that you have, that you want to protect, this gift that we have, but yet, when you drive down twenty-seven, that does not indicate that protection. And you talk about the front door. Front door is relative. Many that come from Fredericksburg, from Comfort on the wine trail, they come on twenty-seven through Center Point, and someday, we will have to where we're not a drive precinct, and then there will be more industry in that area. But people do take that road, and what does that road represent as you drive by Weecraft, Martin Marietta, Dry Mola? What does this say about protecting our river? So I ask, as you move forward and you look at what Kerrville, it impacts those of us that live in the outside areas. Thank you.
Good, thank you, thank you. Ms. Lipscomb?
No, I'm not on the speaker list, but I was just wondering if we're allowed to make a comment on the last speaker's request, because some of that was out of the control of Kerrville, T.C.E.Q. did it.
Yeah, and I would say that's the statement, some of that was out of the control of Kerrville. Right. Okay, okay. Dr. Rector?
Thank you. Honorable mayor, honorable councilperson. I'm here as William Rector, seven oh five Water Street, as a downtown business or building owner, and also president of HDBA, the Historic Downtown Business Association. And I would like to ask you to strongly support this comprehensive plan. It has been well thought out. The participation of the community in developing this plan is outstanding. Five hundred and fifteen people have participated in developing this plan. It seems well thought out. We particularly like the emphasis on revitalization of downtown. We feel like that it should be the living room of Kerrville, it should be the go-to place for tourism, and I would hope that each of you would seriously consider giving your support to this plan, this important plan for Kerrville. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Moser.
Thank you, city council mayor. My name is Tom Moser, county commissioner, live at two forty Ranch House Road, outside of the city limits, but in the ETJ current and expanded. I was a member of the Steering Committee, and I want to compliment the city and the consultants that put this together. I thought it was done in a very organized way, in a process that opened up to the community. It let everybody come in and have a participation in it, to have a say in it, and to have their reflections implemented. I hope that's the case. I think the comprehensive plan is extremely important because it's a foundation, a roadmap for what can be done. You don't have to follow it exactly. Case in point is the airport master plan. It was developed about five years ago. It's been used very effectively. It's a very similar plan on a smaller scale, but the effectiveness of it, one of the effectivenesses of it, has been the fact that this airport used to require four hundred thousand dollars a year from city and county, now requires zero. I say zero. So that master plan helped develop some of the money-producing parts of the plan. Another characteristic is the plan, and the product of it is to maintain Kerrville as a small city, small city character, I should say, and a quality of life. I think that's the reason everyone moved here, so I think it's an extremely good plan. Let me comment, if I may, on Jana Colgate's comment. I agree with Jana a hundred percent. There's another corridor, which is the entrance into Kerrville through the, from the east, from Comfort. There's a lot of industry out there. This plan does not include all of that area, even though it did include a lot of county residents as part of the comprehensive plan and the establishment thereof. The county would like to be in a position to have more control. We're not allowed to by state law. There's, it's been initiated several times through bills that have never gotten out of committee to give counties more local control in what's being developed. Right now, we don't have that authority, but hopefully, in this next legislative session, we'll make another run at it. Don't know if we'll succeed. It's been five times tried, but five times failed. So it's very important to this entire community. I would add one other thing on the thoroughfare plan as an example. It was mentioned that it was changed many times. The Planning Committee, Steering Committee, and subcommittees listened to the community and what they thought should be there and what shouldn't be there. So I think it reflects that community's and those citizens' actions and desires very much. So I think it's, bottom line, I think it's a very good plan. I'd encourage you to adopt it. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Glenn Andrew.
My name's Glenn Andrew, three five five three La Cumbre. I was privileged to be a part of one of the subcommittees of this particular process. I can say that, because when you started planning plan, planning comprehensive plan, there's always great consternation, is this something that's going to become fruition? Is this going to be developed in ways that are not inclusive? And to those, it clearly has not been so. It has been extremely open and extremely well done. My compliments to the staff, my compliments to the city council leadership, and my compliments to the consultants on the way they've handled this, the way they've organized it, and in particular, the way they execute it. Sometimes you can organize, but the execution sometimes fails, and I thought they've done an extraordinarily good job, all three groups. It was great participation, five hundred and something people plus. And every time you turned around in this city, there was an opportunity, whether it was just people talking, asking, or really actually participating and writing. There was an enormous amount of information, an enormous amount of energy surrounding this entire nine months, which is a long time to keep the energy level that was maintained. That I'm very pleased. It was dynamic, it was very energetic, with great enthusiasm, and as part of one of the subcommittee's economic development, it was very open. We had significant input by everyone on the committee. Ideas were kicked around, kicked out, kicked in and out, and discussed openly, and for that, I found the positive, very positive process, both with the staff and with the leadership of the committee. All in all, we have a plan. It is exactly that, a plan. It's not a detailed gotta-do, it's a top-level plan that Tom just talked about. I'm enthused about it, I think it's extremely well done. I encourage each of you to support it, and let's go about having a twenty fifteen plan that gives us a vision of where we want the city, and all of us want the city to be, when our children and grandchildren inherit it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name's Walter Kerneig, I'm president and CEO of the Kerrville Area Chamber of Commerce. I was privileged to serve on both the Steering Committee and as chairman of the Economic Development Subcommittee. As a community, we've come a very long way together in the definition of our future. The creation of the Kerrville twenty fifty Comprehensive Plan has spanned nearly nine months, during which time we saw unprecedented transparency and community participation. There were scores of meetings held to gather input from the community, and literally hundreds of community members turned out to contribute to the process and the product. According to the consulting firm that's facilitating the developments plan, this level of community participation is rarely seen, even in cities much, much larger than Kerrville is. The Steering Committee in our final meeting, and I'll remind everyone, it was a committee that both included and was populated by those nominated by city council- that both included and was populated by those nominated by city council members seated prior to the last election, voted to approve and then move the plan to the adoptive process with zero dissenting votes. This chamber is encouraged by the level of community consensus that's driving the plan forward. Coming together with a common voice and a unified vision of the future is not only good for business, but it's good for the entire community. Recent discussions in the community are concerning, and it's important to recap, I think, what the plan is and what the plan isn't. I'll start with what the plan isn't. The plan isn't a plan that prescribes a gentrification process that removes poor and elderly people from their homes because they can't afford to provide necessary property maintenance. Frankly, I find such an assertion very sad. That simply isn't who we are as a community, and such an approach would never have made it through the extensive plan development process, which was, as I said before, incredibly inclusive and incredibly transparent. Contrarily, through the plan's guiding principles and maintenance of the unique character of our neighborhoods is defined as an important objective, and the plan's guiding principles also specifically discourage the displacement of people through gentrification. The plan also is a resurrection of the Unified Development Code of the Past. The plan does not establish any rules or regulations that create limits on personal property rights. In fact, it's a plan can't and doesn't define any rules or regulations at all. The modification of codes and regulation needs to be done through our elected officials, as they always have been. The Curville twenty fifty plan is a document that describes our common community vision, our common guiding principles across a wide range of community-relevant topics and specific action items that will move the community forward for the next thirty years. It's a plan that was developed with unprecedented transparency and extraordinary community involvement and consensus, and for that, I'm very proud. Given the great level of participation and the broad agreement on the quality of the final product as of June fifth, and based on formal resolution from our board of directors, the Curville Area Chamber of Commerce has officially endorsed the twenty fifty Curville Comprehensive Plan. The chamber requests a vote tonight that reflects the high level of community-wide consensus demonstrated to date. We support full and unanimous vote to adopt the Curville twenty fifty comprehensive plan. We appreciate working with you all and with the community, and look forward to continuing to work together to realize the goals and objectives defined by the community as communicated within the plan. Thank you very much.
As, as we await the next speaker, I want to observe that, from the initiation of this plan, that you're hearing such good comments on tonight, and through eight months of its development, was with the leadership of, of Mayor Bonnie White. Do we have another speaker? Okay. All right. And if there are no other speakers.
Is he standing up to speak? Are you gonna?
Ruben, are you speaking?
Yes, I am.
Okay, all right. Ruben Exum? Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and tell the rest of them. I've requested that he sing at my funeral, so...
Ruben Exum, three oh one Lacasa Drive. I work for Hill Country MHD Centers. And I'm glad that everybody has the definition of gentrification. And I'm glad that the speakers have so eloquently said that they, that's not their intention. But we want to be sure that it's no unintentional gentrification. And so, you know, thank you guys for coming out, Mayor Blackburn and Councilman Barodi, and with the informal presentation of the twenty fifty Comprehensive Plan. And then being able to be in attendance for the formal, for the comprehensive plan has been very beneficial. And just being able to read over the draft, and I'm grateful that it is a draft, meaning that there can be some amendments made to it. So there's really no misunderstanding. It's just that there's some concerns. As you would understand someone in their community, when you first see this document, there are some things that cause concern. There are some things that might spark some fears of gentrification. So I don't apologize for having those types of fears or concerns or hope to offend anyone that would think otherwise. But my concern is, you know, I understand that many things start with good intentions in the hand of, hands of the originators, but times of, give place to change. And what is good in the hands of one becomes a tragedy in the hand of others. So for instance, you know, reading through the document, the minimum property standards or the proactive code enforcement that may possibly make it difficult for longtime homeowners and residents to remain in their homes and communities. So that's, that's another part of where we could probably do some amendment to the language in this, so we don't unintentionally have any type of gentrification. The increase of the property value, which is an upside, and it also has a downside. If individuals find themselves no longer able to afford their property, property taxes, moving may be the only option. Then that's another form of unintentional gentrification. So what if you have twenty, thirty, forty people, longtime residents, that are forcing that? So, you know, what guarantee do we have to prevent, you know, good intentions from turning into a disastrous story of gentrification? And, you know, we have an opportunity, being that it is a rough draft, to ensure that the language is right, so we don't have these fears. I think that everybody here, especially, you know, the mayor and councilmembers are, you know, have the, the community's best interest in mind. And remembering some of the things that were said last night, especially the mayor, when it was brought to your attention, you promptly said that you asked the powers that be, and they said it was, they would assure you that it was not their intention to displace elderly, poor, downtrodden, mis- misinfortuned, those seeking a better life, those wanting to kind of work their way up in Curville. So, I mean, we're trusting and believing that that is the intention. But whenever you have a document or something that's going to be set in stone, and like I said, thank God it's an amendment, we have to make sure that we get the language right in there to ensure that the people in the community, the Doyle community, that are concerned about this aren't affected down the road when you, you guys are no longer here. You know, someone else is going to take your place and see language and interpret it in a different way. And maybe, and then maybe they will intentionally gentrify the, the community. So hopefully, we had a place right now where we can, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
I would like, I would like to comment, and then we'll go to discussion.
We got another speaker?
We got another speaker? Okay, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Michael Green, three twelve Pearl Street, here in Curville, Texas. Some forty odd years ago, I moved here from the Gulf Coast of Texas and fell in love with these hills. And served time in the military, came back, bought a home here. And now, from this meeting that I went to last night, I felt that some of the language that was brought out in this proposal was that we're kind of being pushed away from the things that we own. We have a culture here, and I felt that with this comprehensive plan that's going on, I mean, I realized that, you know, with progress, change has to come. What I'm concerned about is, which where I am now, part of the elderly, what's going to happen to us when we can no longer meet these taxes or higher property taxes and things of that nature? And where are we to go? When you come in and say, you, you know, you're no longer here, you know? Where would we go? Are we part of this plan? Is our, our community, is it going to still be there? There's a lot of black culture there. There's a lot of black history here, as you know. And to walk up and tell someone says, hey, you're no longer on this property, we can take it away from you with a few words, you know? And this was my major concern, you know, what's going to become of our community when you're saying that this is going to be part of downtown? You know, that means that we're going to have to step aside and allow you to come in and say, hey, you're in the way, you know, move over, get out. Where do we to go? Because there, again, last night, that, in the meeting, it was said there were certain areas in this town that blacks were not allowed to live or buy property. I mean, why is that? Where are we to go? After our lives, we have children, grandchildren. I would like to see them grow here, along with this plan. It's a good plan, but why should we have to suffer to make this plan work?
Yeah, yeah.
And I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Michael. Okay. All right.
Honorable mayor, councilmembers, Reverend David Schuler. My address can be found at all those faces right there on those two roads that got that nice brown tan like mine. I was a former pastor here. I'm a real estate major in college. Graduate, work as a natural community. I'm a native of Austin originally, and of course, that should, should speak a lot about change. One of the things that I'd like the city of Curville to consider, if you have not already, please forgive me if I mention something that you've already discussed in your fact-finding or your preliminary thought in putting all this together. Community Land Trust could be a viable option for concerns of the Curville North community. It will take care of the taxation for them, as well as give the city the options to enforce the traditional tax on those who come later. As an idea could be worked out, you know, they could probably get together and, and formulate a plan to present to the council. That may be a viable option, that maybe hasn't been considered at this time. Just a brief insight of that, well, I won't go into that at all, actually, just the fact that I mentioned the name. And, and there, there are several viable ways of accomplishing that. That protects their property for up to ninety-nine years, and then it's renewed after that, every ninety-nine years. And as the face of the community changed, I know their concerns would be that they would, the architectural theme should reflect the tasteful continuity of an architectural design that both sides agree on. Even those who want to improve their properties or rebuild new properties, still provisions for affordable housing even in that plan. And so, I, I just want to, to, to just put those few things out in, in my brief moment. Curville's an easy place to, to love. People of Curville are easy to love as well. And my time was, was very well enjoyed, the years that I pastored here in this fair city. I think with, with some of these considerations, we could experience some things in Curville that's never been experienced before, particularly among the citizens of Curville. Thanks.
Thank you, Reverend Schuler. Okay, all right. As we move to discussion. Yeah, yeah, okay. The public hearing is closed at seven forty-four. You know, that gavel is a real sense of authority.
It's really loud, too.
Yeah, yeah. I, I want to comment on some of what has been discussed. I do not blame the residents of the Doyle area for their concern and anger, given the scary picture that they have been painted in the last few days. And I understand, at some level, their concern and anger. Sadly, this part of our town has long been neglected and overlooked, and there has been racism in that neglect. Even though gentrification, where the population's moved out and you've got new folks coming in, even though gentrification is a threat, it is not because of Curville twenty fifty. In fact, the comprehensive plan is explicitly about strengthening neighborhoods and a sense of place for all our neighborhoods. My experience in the Doyle area, and what is sometimes called Curville North, goes back seventeen years, when in partners and ministry, we began to do community development in that area. The first thing we did was do a door-to-door survey with fourteen of the residents doing the survey about what people liked and what they saw as the strengths and what they saw as the needs in the area. And it was very telling. You got lots of folks that love that area and love being there. And many of them are second and third generation, and, but I think, and, and just quickly, I've preached there in the churches with the Doyle School Community Center. I, I wrote the grant that received the foundation money to buy the historic black school from the public schools here and turn it into a community center for the neighbors. One of the things, first things I did after I became mayor was ask to do a town hall over there at the Doyle School Community Center. And so, as I told the folks at Barnett Chapel Church at the meeting organized last night by Congressman Barudi, if I thought Curville fifty's intent, intent was to hurt this part of town, I would vote against it in a minute. I do not believe that, and I will vote for it. And the city manager and I will be meeting with representatives of the residents of that neighborhood very shortly to work, to talk about the things that Ruben and Reverend, Reverend Schuler and others have mentioned tonight, to really assure people that they are safe in their homes and their neighborhood. Thank you. Is there other discussion?
Yeah, I've just pushed a request to speak, so can I speak?
Yeah.
First off, I'm just a councilman, not a congressman, so just...
Did I call you a congressman?
I believe so. I just, I just want to make sure everybody understood that. So...
His, his, his father worked on the White House staff, so, of two presidents, so...
Well, you need to check your research, because that was my uncle, but that's okay.
Oh, uncle, okay.
That's all right. So I'm not a congressman, and my dad was something else.
Okay.
But all right. So on to why we're actually here. So some of, I mean, I would, I would agree with you. I don't think, I mean, I did, I did actually have been talking with the community there, and it's not something because of a fear-mongering situation, as was alleged earlier. It's actually because there are studies, not mine, there are studies that describe what can cause some of this. And let's start with the definition, okay? So we're throwing around the word gentrification. In our plan, it actually talks about, it states, well, Curville will try to minimize the displacement of its current citizens. When I read "try to minimize," it doesn't say eliminate, it's not a no tolerance. That's a "try to minimize." That's an acceptance that some of it will occur. That was a problem for me that I raised at a steering committee. But the definition, I guess it's a different version of Webster, because it's Webster's, is "the process of renewal and rebuilding accompanying the influx of middle-class or affluent people into deteriorating areas that often displaces poor residents." Nobody is suggesting that Curville's intent, or this plan's intent, is to do that. What I am suggesting is that there's not much alternative to the, it will be unintended consequences, but they will be real, because if what you're talking about is a proactive property maintenance... property maintenance code that's going to be proactively enforced, the, the result is going to be, that's not maintaining a level of property value in the neighborhood, it's actually going to be raising it. And if you raise that level, you're going to raise the ownership expense. And whether you're a homeowner or a renter, that's going to be passed on to you in an expense that I would argue is going to push some people into a position of having to look for another home. Now, keep in mind that Kerrville, everybody understands, has an affordable housing problem. We don't have options beyond where people are currently living. And the biggest irony to me is in the Kerrville 2050 plan, we have some wonderful things. We talk about aging in place. These are desired traits. Aging in place, a walkable neighborhood, affordable housing options, infill development, community events, community gathering spots, utilizing our parks with community events. Can anybody tell me a single neighborhood in Kerrville, other than Kerrville North, that is already activating this plan? They already have all of those traits within that neighborhood. So to me, any risk of breaking up that neighborhood is one risk too many. And there are studies that we can take, that we can look at, that show that this sort of policy would lead to some, over time, the woman that coined the phrase "gentrification" made the statement that once it starts, once the process of gentrification starts in a district, it goes on rapidly until all or most of the original working-class occupiers are displaced. Okay? That's not my theory. That's, that's a thirty, forty-year-old statement that's being made, and there are studies since then that show it. They studied the neighborhoods, they did one in Austin, because it had the same scenario. So it's not that we're trying to get people afraid. What I'm trying to do is make people aware that all good-hearted people, as Mr. Exum said, everybody involved has the heart in the right place, but these are foreseeable results that can be avoided. And I don't think that this plan should be implemented with action items in it that could possibly lead to any displacement. And so my suggestion of all that was to basically say, why don't we pull these specific items out until they can be vetted more thoroughly, and then put them back in, as opposed to leaving them in and attempting to vet them later, which may or may not occur. So the only assurance we have is, why don't we get a better look at it before? It doesn't mean the plan itself is dead in the water. It means the plan would be a unified plan that everybody is going to support, and we can look at the, you say controversial, I wouldn't call it that. I would say the ones that are detrimental or possibly detrimental to the community. You know, the aging in place aspect of it, of this one particular neighborhood, is beyond belief, as far as what the generational staying power, if you will, of the neighborhood is stronger than any other neighborhood we have. And rather than actually targeting it as some, and that phrase "targeting" is coming from the plan, there's a sentence in there saying there are neighborhoods right near downtown that need to be addressed as far as falling into disrepair. Well, name one or two. Well, you're talking about this same neighborhood. So rather than focusing so much on that, why don't we focus on something, I think we should be modeling our neighborhoods after that neighborhood for the fact that it is exactly the traits that we have decided, we took nine months to decide, that we could have just looked at their neighborhood and said, "That's what we want."
Okay. Mark, yeah, Delaine?
Whenever you want me to speak.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I want to thank you all for coming tonight. I wish we had had you to talk to sooner, because that's what we wanted to do all along, was get your input and your feedback, and I am sure there's a way we can make you comfortable. And we have to make the other four hundred to five hundred also that came, have been coming and been giving input. We have a lot of input for various reasons and variety of ideas, which is really good. That's a very good thing, and it's a good challenge, shall I say. So I wasn't at the meeting last night, and I'm sorry I didn't get to hear some of the things that were said. I just hope that they weren't, they didn't instill fear, because that was never our intent. And having been to every meeting but one on the steering committee for nine months, we hashed out so many things, and we could have probably hashed this out, too, long ago. So, thank you for coming. Don't be a stranger, and perhaps we'll see again at some point, and we can celebrate something good in your neighborhood that's new and a sign of the future. So, thank you.
I want to ask a procedural question. Can Mark respond to this issue?
The council can call upon anybody they'd like.
Okay. Mark, would you respond? Do you feel like the, this plan promotes gentrification?
So, no, I do not believe that. My belief is that the people that wrote these specific items intentionally were not trying to create gentrification. From the standpoint of code enforcement causing gentrification, what I've seen is in other communities, code enforcement is bringing an issue of property maintenance into view, and the intent of that is so that the housing that people are living in is good-quality housing. At the end of the day, again, I shared this a little earlier, what I've seen in other communities is, once you've identified housing and issues with deterioration of housing that need to be addressed, there are all kinds of ways to get that taken care of. In some cases, it's a property owner needs to reach in their pocket and pay for those things, but I've seen in many communities, it becomes an opportunity for the faith-based community to be able to plug in, and the city, in many cases, working with the faith-based community, can start to make those ties to be able to improve the homes to where they're not in a situation where they're going to deteriorate to the point that you lose them in the future. I think the key to maintaining the neighborhoods is keeping the housing stock to a level that people continue to live in it, and if houses have been removed through the years or fallen down, then try to replace them with compatible types of housing within the same neighborhood. And we've seen those methods work very well in neighborhoods that were facing gentrification to be able to improve them. I've seen examples. My mother grew up in a part of Dallas called Little Mexico. She was in, her family immigrated from Mexico, and that neighborhood is totally different today, but the second generation, there were steps made to where, when they moved to West Dallas, there were things done to make sure that that gentrification did not occur and displace the same neighborhood a third time. So, at the highest level, this plan, with the intent of not creating gentrification, allows you to drill down into specifically what are the methods that you're going to use in implementing this plan, those techniques that are developed through follow-on conversations to be able to make sure that, that the way it's implemented is in keeping with, keeping that issue from becoming a bigger issue in the community.
Can I ask him a couple of questions?
Yeah.
Okay. So first off, there is a slight difference in, Mr. Blackburn kind of lumped these together yesterday, but there's a separate thing between property maintenance codes and how you handle vacant lots and abandoned buildings. I don't think anybody, including the people in any community, want vacant lots and abandoned buildings to remain just there, okay? So that's, that's one issue. But the property maintenance code enforcement, why that would just basically lead to gentrification is because it generally happens in the low-income neighborhoods. If I've got a home that I'm, that I've paid for, it's already paid for, the only ownership expense is property taxes. Whether it's out of my pocket or some faith-based group or whatever comes in and I accept the help to fix, you know, to raise the value of my home, what happens to my property taxes? They go up. So, at that point, in a community that's like Kerrville, where household income is also low, is that not essentially the recipe for gentrification? The expenses go up, the revenue do not, and if the standard that we apply, the property maintenance standard we apply, is actually a value above where that neighborhood currently is, then isn't, isn't that what that is?
So, so, I, I think there are two ways to look at this. There are ways to solve the issue of rising property values, and I think that was mentioned tonight, that some of those things should be explored, as to how can you main, help people maintain the ownership of their home as values rise. I think the bigger issue is the inverse of what you're saying, is if you don't start to address issues that become life safety issues in homes, or become issues that, you know, at some point could live to the home being able to be lived in, then in essence, what you're doing is you're creating a neighborhood, in my mind, that is much more likely to gentrify.
Right, but does our plan address that aspect of it? It does not. It talks about the code enforcement without the actual other side.
So, at the same time, we talk about, and again, these came out of subcommittee discussions, every one of these action items. But these action items also talk about the intent not to create gentrification, to allow people to stay in their homes, to age in place. And so, like so many areas of this plan, the devil's going to be in the details as you drill down and start to say, "Okay, how do we specifically implement?" This is setting the guiding principles and the overview for how to move the plan forward, but it's, it's going to be really important that this discussion continue to come up with something, somebody talked about applying the same standard to every neighborhood across Kerrville. We'd suggest that you need to look at each neighborhood independently and look at the specific issues, but that is something that you do in a step-by-step manner after a comprehensive plan is adopted and you move forward with the implementation of the plan.
Right, so as far as to get that, that's, that's the fear factor that's in there, because there's a couple of things going on. One, we don't, in our plan, talk about how to really address the affordable housing issue, and these proactive property maintenance codes are actually low-hanging fruit in our plan, because they're the cheapest to implement. The city's going to implement them, or the city would be the implementer of them, and they're, they're said to be ongoing and short-term. So we're going to get to those before we actually get to the other side, the affordable housing. Maybe putting something in the plan that says that we make sure we don't start this until we have the alternate stuff, because the fear is there, I mean, the reality is there.
Which is the reason the council's discussing this at this point.
Right. Is it, is it congressman or councilman vocal?
It's Vincent.
Yeah, Vincent, okay.
I, I feel like Ruben does. I think, I think the plan is in the right hands right now, but we can, we can ensure that this doesn't get, I guess, abused later in the future by just removing these two things. Is there any way that these issues being removed today will affect the rest of the comprehensive plan?
Well, you're, by the way, you're talking about, uh, chapter six, housing.
Use of code enforcement as stabilizing and improving existing neighborhoods, not as a means to redevelop and enforce current minimum property standards, which I've asked staff what our current minimum property standards are, and I still don't have an answer on that.
Actually, I did respond.
What, what, I, do we have any?
We do not, beyond what's in the building code. So it's basically about substandard housing, but, you know, the idea of doing a property maintenance ordinance or a property maintenance code has been on the radar for the council since I've been here, is a future action item, and I think that that was something that was taken up in committee as a possible thing that we want to consider, but not necessarily. The other thing that I would add on the tax issue, remember we have an over-sixty-five tax freeze, so if they own the property, the taxes don't go up, even if there's improvements to the property.
Yeah, I understand that, but it pigeonholes, keep in mind what happens in the neighborhood. It's passed on to the next generation. Next generation may not be over sixty-five, so as soon as they get it, that property value is stuck them into a place where they're going to move out. So it's still a real thing, if the value goes up, the value goes up, and it affects landlords who are renting, because they're going to pass that value on to the renter as well. So, it, I mean, it's out there. So to his, to his question, though, he's asking basically, what, what part of the plan falls apart if what we do is, and it's not, it's not really just two items, but it's two thoughts that are throughout, what's the, what's the harm in, instead of voting to keep them in and dealing with the details later, why don't we pull them out until we've got the details ready?
Okay. Councilman Eichner?
I just would like to say thank you all for coming tonight, for everyone who spoke, and I think that our plan is, I don't think our plan is in any way, shape, or form going to do some of the things that have been mentioned tonight. There may be, I think Councilman Barudy, some of these items, if we implement the plan, some of these details, it would be wonderful if you were a very integral part of making sure that those are saying exactly what you would like for them to say. I think this plan can protect our communities, can protect our properties. I think that's what it's designed for, and it's been thought through, it's been examined, and I think we need to move forward with it, but with people like you paying special attention to some of those specific areas.
Yes, ma'am. And then we're gonna, yes, ma'am.
Can I speak?
Yes, yes.
My name is Sabrina Richardson, and I live at one-three-three West Shriners Street. I've just been living here in Kerrville for a year and a half, but I just moved from an area that did gentrification, and the rent skyrocketed, and I fall in that category that I'm like an heir to a property, fourth generation. And like you said, the tax property, you said, do not go up, but for me, I came back to Kerrville to improve my house, and it was under realtor, and the realtor didn't do anything to the property, didn't call us or anything. And now I'm back here, and I came from, I only found like two organizations that would help low-income, affordable people to fix their property. I feel this amendment should not, should be considered to let a minority to speak on this, because I've seen gentrification happen from where I just came from. Bedroom, one bedrooms are thirteen hundred to sixteen hundred dollars. I moved here because I had a house, and all I had to pay was the property taxes, and now I come here to Kerrville and have to deal with gentrification here. And I've seen, I've heard of gentrification happen in Harlem back in the sixties, it's happened, happened in Oakland, it's happened in other areas, and now, like you guys said, Austin, because I don't know a lot, but I really don't think it's fair for the elderly that have been here all these years, they seventy, eighty years old, and it's just unfair to them to lose their property. The developers will come in here, and once they improve our areas, I'm all for improving that area, I'm all for it, but I don't hear anyone talking about what type of funding or, you know, that can help our community, you know? And I'm, I'm all for it if we can have some type of help from the house, you know, to help us in our community to fix up our property so it can look better, so it can follow the 2050 plan.
All right, thank you, Sabrina. I'd say, in order for us to be able to get home for the ten o'clock news, I'm going to call the question and ask and make the motion that we adopt the 2050 plan with the understanding that the city manager and I are going to work with residents in the Doyle area, and I trust Mark can help us on that, and as, as Councilman Eichner suggested, to get recommendations as well from Councilman Barudy. So that's the motion.
Mayor, you need to include the changes that were made earlier or between the.
For the editing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, okay. That does include the changes and editing that Mark went over with us earlier tonight.
I still have some issues I'd like to address, Mayor.
Okay.
I've given you all a list, and I've given staff a list of things that I have concerns on, and I think they touch on. on, and I think they touch on the gentrification also. But under Community and Neighborhood Character and Placemasing, C 4.4, it's implement a landscape ordinance that provides credit for preserving existing desirable trees. I don't mind the city providing a credit. I do mind the use of the term landscape ordinance. I think that's a little restrictive and an overreach for the city. I don't, it's something I don't, it's something I don't believe in. I don't want to force people to plant certain things. And I know there's mention to it in the paper today about a UDC, and I've talked to multiple people in this community, and they feel that a lot of these things do resemble what the UDC was about 10 to 15 years ago. C 4.10, evaluate the adoption of an architectural guidelines to address building orientation and scale, design features, and building materials. Again, I don't think the city should be telling people how to build their house and what materials to use. There are places in our community that you can go to if you want a rock wall. They have certain restrictions, setbacks, and things, so I don't want to see this blanket over the city. I think we can give incentives and encourage people to do certain things, but to tell people how to do that, I disagree with that. C 5.1, enforce a current minimum property standards for home structure maintenance and increase proactive code enforcement. I'm already against proactive code enforcement. I think it should be reactive, but we are doing proactive right now, and I think that's, you start toeing the line on selective enforcement. And if we're going to treat people one way, we need to do it straight across the board. We don't need to favor anyone, and I think we're, you kind of flirt with doing that in that one. So, I'd like to see that one removed. C 5.7, consider establishing commercial corridor overlay districts on gateway corridors like 16 and 27 to include desired signage, architecture, and urban design standards. Again, I don't want to tell people how to build their business and how to do things. I think the city can encourage and incentivize people to do things, but to force them to build their building a certain way, I don't, I can't support that. Do we, is the downtown area defined? Do we have, is it central downtown district for D 1.1? Is that strategic category area 1?
Basically.
Basically, okay. I don't know what code enforcement issues we have downtown, but I'm sure there's plenty of people, I know there's plenty of people drive around looking for things that can call. So, that would be reactive. I'd like to remove that one. Create architectural standards and guidelines that promote a certain character such as the use of stone building materials. Again, incentivize, not penalize people for not doing things that, I guess we're trying to require in this. And enforce current, I already spoke on this, housing, H 2.1, enforce current minimum property standards, home structure maintenance, and increase proactive code enforcement. And H 2.2, use code enforcement as a tool for stabilizing and improving existing neighborhoods, not as a means to redevelopment. I think that can, that could prob, that can start that process, and I agree with you all. As far as parks and open space, develop a tree preservation ordinance. I don't want to tell people what they can and can't cut down. The trees in the way of their building site, they should be able to remove it. They can also incentivize people to try to keep as many trees as they can. Another one, P 2.1, part of a landscape ordinance. I don't like the term landscape ordinance. P 4.6, implement a landscape ordinance that provides credit for preserving existing desirable trees, same as C 4.4. I don't want to create, I don't want, I don't want a council later on to have this in their back pocket and say, this is what we're doing. If they're going to try to make restrictions and enforce these things on our citizens, I think they should come up with that on their own and not try to hide behind something in this. But there's obviously many people in our community that don't agree with this. So, I'm going to ask and challenge council to remove current property, or go, you already made your motion, Bill, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the motion is that we adopt the 2050 plan. I will say, and I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time, I will say that if we do adopt it as it is with the editing, that the items that you've talked about tonight, Councilman Vocal, are to be considered as we move toward the final adoption on the 26th. All right, I'm going to call the question.
Would you mind, which is okay, I'm not trying to change your motion, but would you consider actually, because there's a list of 20 that I have, I'm not going to read, that all go to this point, because we've been talking about, that they be considered as someone showing, if you can look through them and see that they don't produce the unintended result, then we move forward to the vote on 26th.
Yeah, okay. I would say even as what, you know, Councilman Vocal has talked about, that becomes part of the process of looking forward. But I tell you, Congressman Baruti, Congressman Baruti, sorry, I got to work on that. Councilman Baruti, I am absolutely committed that we do what we can to protect the Doyle School area, also known as Kerrville North. Okay, the question has been called for, we've got a second. Let's vote then on the adoption of 2050 with the edited portions.
I'd just like to say, I mean, the vote's in, you can, I'm sorry, you can read off what you're going to, you're going to read off the vote, right?
Yeah, the vote is 3-2.
Okay, and I would just like to clarify that I'm not voting against the plan, I'm voting against a section of it.
I agree, George. There's a lot of really good things in the plan. There's just some things that are against my beliefs, and I can't support them.
Yeah, okay. All right, again, I need some direction here because we have a whole bunch more items. Are there any of them that can be held to another meeting?
5A could be held.
Okay. All right. Okay, do I hear a motion to postpone the vote on 5A, which is the ordinance number 2018-12, amending Chapter 202 Traffic and Vehicles, and 6E, confirmation of project scope for the HEB Tennis Center Improvement Project?
I have a comment about 5A.
Okay.
You know, that would be a month from now. Because our next meeting, we won't be able to discuss these. Is there any way we can just keep that one, or it's right the very next one? I do know this oversized load issue has already been an issue for a while, so...
Yeah, okay. Well, then, are you all right on postponing the HEB Tennis Center Improvement Project information? Okay, all right. Is there a motion to that effect?
I shall move.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Did we just move one item? What did we just do?
Yeah, we removed one.
Three items.
We removed two because we put one of that.
I move that we...
What is the motion?
We remove item...
I thought we were just talking about 6E.
6E and 6F.
6E and 6F to our next meeting.
Okay, oh, all right. Can we move that 6F? Okay, all right. So, I amend my motion, or whoever...
I made the motion.
Yeah, you made the motion, all right. So, it's 6E and 6F, we postpone those.
Yes.
Okay, all right, all in favor? Oh, wait, wait. Okay, all right. All in favor, then we will vote yes, and any opposed by no.
I'll send it to everybody.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we are considering 5A, the ordinance about the oversized vehicles. Someone wants, city manager want to speak to that? David, Chief, you want to speak to it?
I'll speak to that, Mayor and Council. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2018-12, amending Chapter 102 Traffic and Vehicles by adding a new article, Escort of Oversized Loads. As an element of our service delivery plan, the Kerrville Police Department conducts oversized load escorts for commercial vehicles moving large cargo through the city. Back in mid-February, we had a discussion regarding the staffing and manpower requirements in order to conduct those escorts. The historical data of manpower staffing reflects that the trend line for escorts of oversized loads that the police department conducts is increasing, with numbers and escorts performed reaching about 500 per year or annually. When traversing the city, oversized vehicles often cause up to four or five vehicle lanes to be closed, and they require the raising of cables and lines associated with traffic signals or intersections, which creates considerable traffic backup. These escorts are all handled with on-duty staffing. The service delivery impact is that two or three officers and vehicles are needed to safely complete most escorts. These escort units are out of their assigned sectors during these times and generally unavailable or delayed in responding to other calls for service that may be generated during the escort. The ordinance provides for a procedure for requesting escort services and a fee to reimburse the city for the police escort expenses. The notification process for requesting the police escort services is through the inclusion of the requirement under route conditions on all Texas oversized overweight single-trip permits that are issued by Techside and that are routed through the city limits of Kerrville. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer those.
You said 500 a year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions of the chief?
I read your recommendations, and I agree with them, and I assume you'll work out the fee schedules with the company.
Yes, we'll bring back a resolution in mid-July that will outline what the change to the fee schedule will be.
And I think there's a 24-hour notice they have to give you?
That's correct.
Right, and it has to be in writing, I do remember that. So, hopefully they'll conform to that, and you won't have to have surprise calls that here we are. I guess there'll be a fine or a penalty or something if they were to not comply with the 24-hour notice and...
There is, there is currently, but the upside would be if they, for instance, they reported a small load as opposed to a large load, then we would recoup that dollar figure that's part of the fee schedule, the proposed fee schedule.
I have a question, Chief. Is the bridge Harper Road over I-10 still the main reason a lot of these are coming through town?
Pretty much.
Pretty much.
You're looking at a height of five feet, 15 feet, six inches on those, these loads that are coming through town, and you've seen them happen multiple times today, for instance, we had a fairly large one. They're over 16 feet in height.
So, the repairs we made to that only corrected, what percentage would you say of those?
A fairly, a fairly small percentage.
How's the state did that, Craig?
I'm sorry.
Did the state do that, or...
Yes.
Yes, but...
But we should be happy about that because this is a good revenue stream, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm saying that seriously. I mean, we don't want to lower that, we don't want to raise the bridge or lower the ground anymore, just bring it through.
Well, I don't know, I think the wear and tear on 27 and the headaches that it causes our city and...
The time away from...
I don't know, I don't know. I'll have to weigh that.
I'd make a motion to pass the ordinance 2018-12 on first reading.
All right, okay.
I'll second.
We've got a motion second. Any further discussion? Let's vote on that. Yeah, so it's 5O. By the way, did you see Chief Knight on the cover of a local magazine recently? Very dashing and...
Could almost be called sexy.
No.
Judy, really.
Can you say that again for the record, please?
Okay, all right. 6A, authorize staff negotiated professional services agreement for public safety complex feasibility study.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. April 23rd, we released an RFQ for a feasibility study to establish a new public safety complex. What this will do is occupy, or house the police department, municipal court, and possibly the fire department, no, the fire department administration. Currently, police is at 429. I don't know if you've had a chance to tour that facility, but it's a little outdated. Used to have municipal court, who has since moved to McFarland, 301 McFarland. It was supposed to be a temporary building when they moved in. We did the 2008 facilities master plan in which it was designated as temporary but needing, basically, to be rejoined with police. Fire admin is currently on 87 Coronado Drive in a leased building. Most of the facilities have ADA compliance issues. So, with the RFQ, basically what we'll do is, or with the feasibility study, evaluate the existing facilities, get a needs assessment, get a concept plan to present to council and stakeholders, and do research on the existing properties, possibly retail or commercial, whatever the leased facility at Fire Admin, different scenarios that they could play out, provide a cost analysis for different facilities as well as different locations within town. So, the new facility has two options that are being proposed for the consultants to conceptualize, a police and municipal court with the possibility, or with Fire Admin, and then the second alternative is without Fire Admin. So, we received five qualification statements and have, in your packet, you'll see the average score of those. And what we're asking tonight is for you to authorize staff to begin negotiations. This is not for any one particular. We will start at the top, highest rated, and if negotiations fail, we will cease negotiations and move to the next one. And then we plan to come back in July and present a scope and fee.
Okay, all right.
I have a question, Mayor. Kyle, do we have a desired location, or is that going to come out of this?
That's going to come out of this. So, part of what they're going to do is the facility itself. The other part is, and probably the more primary, is the location. Find land that could house a facility that size, the parking, and so that's where, based on how much cost for each facility and the needs assessment, will determine the locations that they give us.
In a vicinity or in a specific location?
I think we were looking at specific properties. For example, we'll just say City Hall if we were doing this one.
All right. Do we lease the Fire Admin property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the only property that has some value in terms of real estate would be the where the police department is now.
As well as municipal court over on...
Oh, that's right, on McFarland, right, okay, okay, all right. Right.
Any other questions?
Come answer questions.
Thanks for looking into this.
All right.
Good idea.
May I ask you a move on that?
Sure, I make a motion to authorize staff to negotiate professional service agreement.
I'll second it.
All right. If there's no further discussion, let's vote on that.
Have the new council members had their orientation at the police department and everything?
Yes, right, and it is cramped and just the configuration is not ideal. Okay, 6B, funding agreement between the City of Kerrville and the Kerrville Economic Improvement Corporation for $2 million in funding assistance for the upsizing of the Legion Lift Station for economic development purposes.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to bring this item back to the council. Staff originally brought this idea, concept to the council back in the March timeframe, and the council at that time gave us the blessing to move forward with a funding application to EIC. Essentially... Essentially, the basic parameters that, as you know, we are going through a major expansion to the Legion Lift Station, and a big reason for that is to be able to provide economic development purposes within a major quadrant of the City of Curville, but for this expansion, we will not have development within that corridor. So because of those economic development purposes, we drafted an application, brought that to the EIC, and asked them for $2 million in funding for the overall $10 million project. That $2 million will be utilized first, as we briefed you previously. The city is also going over Texas, after Texas Water Development Board funding and financing. So the way it'll work is if you approve this tonight, the city will utilize that $2 million from EIC first and then ask for the remainder from the Texas Water Development Board. So the EIC did review a funding application, approved that to go forward for the drafting of funding agreement. We held a public hearing for that funding agreement, and they approved it, and now it is before this body. If you have any answering, questions you may have.
The interest in Texas Water Development Board is like 1 in 3/4s?
Yes, sir, it's a certain amount below what the market rate is, and I can't recall that exactly, how many basis points, yeah. It's a certain amount of basis points below what the market is when we seek that funding, but we believe it'll be between 1 and 2%.
Do you know what the market rate is right now? Do we know what that is? Because when you add in the fee, I mean, it's a pretty high fee, right?
It is.
When you add in the fee and the amount that we're going to attempt to borrow, do we have a clue what that sort of computes to?
Yeah, we had that analysis when we brought this to you the last time, and it was significantly below traditional lending, if you like, CO or revenue bond, even with the offset fees and even with the additional requirements that the state might have with the design of the project.
Okay. Okay, are we ready to vote? We have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the funding agreement.
All right.
I'll second.
Okay. Construction contract with Structural Concrete Systems for the parking garage maintenance and repairs.
Okay, so this is the parking garage located across the street. October of last year, we hired M&amp;S Engineering to do a structural assessment. First prioritization was determining whether the structure was structurally sound. M&amp;S did designate it as structurally sound and provided us with an assessment report, which is in your packet. What I've got here for you is some of those pictures and just kind of a general background of the existing conditions of the garage. So in the report, some items that they classified as deferred maintenance items that need to be addressed immediately, or poor condition of the concrete topping, failing expansion joints, some of the double-T stems which were the prefabricated essential structure of the majority of the garage. And then I've got, as you'll see here, so the first picture, you'll see some of the concretes falling. What they determined from that was the deicing that we were, components that we were putting on were basically eroding the concrete structure. As you see in the picture to your right, previously, there was some patching done on this, but there's large areas on the third floor that need addressing. The next slide here, just a typical expansion joint midway through the, all floors of the garage. It's just a typical expansion deteriorates and needs improvement, needs to be updated. So these are the double, what I refer to as a double-T stem. It's a prefab concrete that sits on the two columns, and then they'll put a concrete dressing on top of that. The picture on the left is where it's actually adjacent to one of the column walls, and the picture on the right is where the two of them come together. Both issue, both scenarios have issues where corrosion of the rebar that's exposed, potential damage that may occur from the cracking based on loading. And this is some of the spalling occurring on the walls, double Ts, just cracking that needs to be addressed, it's any concrete structure. So we went to bid.
Mayor, I just want to jump in here real quick if I could. When we went through the analysis with the outside engineering firm, none of the items that were identified were identified as particular safety hazards for the garage, but they were identified as deferred maintenance items that needed to be taken care of now so they don't become safety hazards in the future.
So we opened bids on May 22nd. The apparent low bid was MatCon Construction Services out of Florida. SCS, the Structural Concrete Systems, was actually the second lowest. MatCon had submitted the incorrect bid form, but given the chance, I contacted them or attempted to, and basically they have been non-responsive. SCS received the same email that, basically, asking for their manufacturer certifications and project history, immediately responded that day, and still have not heard from MatCon. So staff decided to go with SCS, and our recommendation is to go with the base bid, which addresses the items that you saw, the deferred maintenance items, in addition to alternate two, which is power washing the entire structure. Additionally, I wanted to bring this to your attention, altering the striping plan in the garage. So the existing is kind of a, it's clockwise, you enter the garage, you immediately take a left. What the consultant was proposing is altering that to a right turn immediately, more of your normal garage structure flow. It reduces the conflict points, and this is the first floor, basically, it would create a quicker presence to the retail along Water Street.
Could I just make a comment on that? Have some really good signage. You know how you move things at HEB and you're just thrown?
Oh, yes.
I think we've all been accustomed, but I think it's a better flow, but really do some attention-getting signs to let them know it's changed.
Right, and the upper floors won't have as much of an issue. You know, I'll go back to the existing. What you see here is you turn left and you have a conflict with people coming down the ramp. The people coming, trying to get out on the first floor, have a conflict with people coming in. So you have two conflict points there where you just have one with people trying to come down the ramp. So, and then on the second floor, like I said, much like the first, the circulation was clockwise and they're proposing counterclockwise. Same with the third, and then the fourth would actually have no changes. It's just a half-floor, two-way on all sides.
Can you go back to the second floor?
Second.
Looks like we swapped the first floor's conflict with the second floor conflict.
So, okay, in the second floor, so what you'll see on the top of the screen, that's actually going up the ramp to the third floor.
Okay, but you're not crossing traffic there. But when you go to the new strip, can you go to the new striping? You see at the bottom and the top?
Lower right of the screen.
Right.
Yeah.
So as it sits right now, that is correct, coming out, so your only conflict point will be on the, basically, Water Street side, coming back to get on the ramp down. Yeah, this, like I said, is more of the typical flow, but it's not, and it does have that conflict point.
No, it actually has a conflict point at each end.
Right.
So go to the top, you know, on their screen now, the lower right, that conflict is actually a pretty dangerous one, because they're coming around the wide side, and they're going to be coming fast, and they're going to have the barriers, so they won't see it. So that's actually a bigger conflict now than what, like you're saying, we're trading that first floor conflict, and we're now adding this one.
Right.
And we'll add the same thing on the third floor. So the question is, what do we gain there? Because I would argue that this...
Well, the first floor is more active, for sure.
Right, and when I asked the same question, and the entrance was basically the governing resolution, but behind their recommendation for this.
With the right signage, would it be too confusing to, how would you do it counterclockwise on the first floor and leave the existing second, third the same?
We can do it however you want.
We did ask the consultant about that, and they were concerned about confusion with drivers and it switching, but, I mean, anything's possible, but it was not their recommendation to have a, to alternate based off of the floors.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes, I mean...
And then signage, like you said, signage is key. So with this striping plan... Okay, actually, I went a little bit too far. So in the striping plan, it's $80,000, and what we're looking at, let me see if I can pop it back, $60,000 of that is to remove the existing striping. So we could just go in and re-stripe what is there, and not remove any striping, leave it as is, and basically just pronunciate what's already there.
Would that be confusing though, too? Because sometimes you have the shadow left from, I don't know...
No, no, he's talking, you're talking about leave everything alone.
Leave the parking...
Just refresh the stripes.
Right, just bring them...
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, leave it, okay, right.
As you drive in there, you'll see a lot of black marks over the existing striping.
Yeah.
Some signage, some instances doesn't even occur in the garage.
Have we had many actual accidents in there?
None that I'm aware of.
Right, and so the biggest thing to the change, well, there's a couple of things. You didn't actually address the other change that's going to occur. The straight-in parking in the middle lanes is going to be turned to angle parking, correct?
Right, I'm glad you brought that up, yes. So that would be angled in. During a hailstorm is really about the only time you really see it. Everybody congregates in there, and that narrow width of that center, the ramp, the angled parking gives you a little bit more room with the size of the vehicle we have today.
But again, I mean, it worked for years with the hospital there, right?
Right.
So the downside to the angle parking is you come in, you go angle, you got to go up to go out.
Right, if you've got a spot open on your left, you have to go back around.
And if people won't go up, what they'll do is make the hard U-turn...
Right.
Which is a safety issue possibly, right? Me personally, I'd rather just leave the whole striping the way it is. It sounds like the biggest reason we're changing it is so that people can make that a legal right to park on Water Street, right? Isn't that really what we're trying to address?
Well, it's currently...
At the first floor, yeah.
That conflict whenever you come in.
Yeah, it's a conflict, but it's really more about all the people turning to the right.
Yeah, to prevent stacking and stuff.
Yeah.
If somebody's having to wait for people coming down the ramp, and they're stacking out on Water Street, this gets them up the ramp or to the right.
Yeah.
So if we don't re-stripe...
So staff recommendation is for the base bid, which is the maintenance items, and alternate two, which is for power washing.
Okay.
And so I've got a little breakdown here for you for that alternate one with the $59,000 of removal of the existing striping, and then as you see, the $20,700 is the striping and signage. So staff's recommendation does not include the signage, this is something we wanted to present to you, but our recommendation is for the $615,668.70 for the base bid and alternate two.
SCS is out of Houston?
Yes, sir.
I have a question, I just caught on something when I was reading it earlier. It says it's structurally sound?
Yes.
I'm hearing multiple things. We can't have events on it, or we can? Is it, is it restricted?
I would have to defer to a structural engineer on that, but when I asked that same thing, you know, when you figured a 10,000-pound vehicle and several people, but they said it's different types loading, and that's what...
They're expecting heavier people, right.
Will the restrictions on the property allow us to do these improvements?
What's that?
Will the restrictions on this property will allow us to do all these improvements?
These are actually not improvements, these are only maintenance items.
Maintenance.
Any improvements would have to be approved by the foundation.
Okay.
Do these restrictions really pertain to architectural elements on the exterior of the building, not on the interior? But again, these are just maintenance items.
Okay.
All right, are we ready to vote?
I would make a motion that we take the staff's recommendation, do the base bid, and I guess number two, alternate.
Okay, all right.
I second.
Okay, motion second. We move to 6D, execution of a construction contract with Lambda Construction for the oxidation ditch bid. Tell us about that.
So I know you haven't had your tour of the wastewater plant, so I've got Stuart here for technical expertise, but we've got a picture here for you of what it is. So this, the oxidation ditch was identified in the most recent wastewater master plan 2012. It was listed as a higher risk with the second highest criticality rating. It's been in service since the beginning? Since the beginning of the plant. And basically, what we have is baffles that have concrete deteriorating, again, another maintenance issue. And then the second part of this, which we will bring probably late summer, is the dredging. You know, so we'll go in and remove all the suspended solids within that facility. So we took this to bid for package one, which is just the aerator baffles and supports. We received one loan bid. It was over the estimate, but still within 10% of the engineer's estimate. It was a company that staff has worked with a number of times before at the same wastewater plant, and our recommendation is to approve the construction contract with Lambda.
I've got a question. That's, I call it the lap pool, but that's that large area that's going to be in?
Yes, the race track.
Is, so what happens when we shut it down to fix that? Is that, it's not going to affect anybody in town, will it?
Well, we won't shut it down. We'll shut it down one rotor at a time. The reason that's nothing, it hasn't been fixed is because that is the only unit that does that kind of treatment at the plant, and so it's never been out of service since the, since the plant's come online. So there's a lot of sludge in the bottom of it. The deflector plates have fallen off the backside of the rotors, and so it's time for maintenance on them, but we do not intend to shut it off.
You can fix it while it's operating?
If I shut one of them off at a time, yes, we can fix it.
So it's kind of like a regular pool where they take a break, the kids got to get out, and the adults still get to take the laps? That's what we'll be doing.
This isn't our wastewater master plant, correct?
Yes.
What is that stuff that sprays in that thing? No, I'm just kidding.
Flavor.
Sorry.
Okay.
I move that we accept the authorization of the construction contract with Lambda Construction for the oxidation ditch bid at $195,000.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion second, okay. Let's vote.
You thought it wasn't noticeable, huh?
My dog is crossing its lap.
Okay, all right. Is that 5-0?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, let's go to 6F, authorization to purchase soccer field lights.
We defer to that.
Oh, wait, wait.
ENF, we're holding G.
Okay, ENF, we're holding G. Change to the board's commission application forms and establish public notification process.
I'm sorry, EA just informed me that the bid might expire if you want to go ahead and take action on the sixth count.
6F? Okay. All right, let's go to 6F, purchase soccer field lighting for the Curville Sports Complex, $70,400.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is an authorization to purchase some sports lighting for the Curville Sports Complex for the soccer fields in the amount of $70,400. Staff took a recommendation to our Parks Board last month with several items related to the project balance, and this was approved unanimously by the Parks Board. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the authorization to purchase soccer field lighting for the Curville Sports Complex from Musco Sports Lighting LLC through the Texas Byboard in the amount of $70,400.
I second.
I got a question for Ashley.
Do we, are we missing lights at the old fields? Did we put those on the new fields, or are they...
No, the lights on the old fields are still in the old fields, the ones on the new fields.
I think there were nine, now there's only four out there?
Some were, some were removed, and they were repurposed at the DBA building.
Okay.
Around the little turf field.
So the T-ball or the field adjacent to...
The T-ball field, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so the list of items that are, that the Parks Board looked at, we'll end up singling out the soccer lights, which I think most people would agree is, you know, a good idea of the stuff that's on there. Are we going to get an opportunity to discuss these items that are on here as well as a couple others that were discussed in another... Are we gonna get an opportunity to discuss these items that are on here, as well as a couple others that were discussed in another venue?
I believe now is the opportunity if you have questions.
Okay, 'cause I see, I see the ones on here, some of which I, I see the total three oh three. And I guess, what's the amount, two fifty-five or something that we got left? Okay, and a couple of items that aren't on there is something to choose from that I'd asked about, other people had asked. I heard, so scoreboards, I heard the response at the Parks Board was about, you know, people are going away from scoreboards, you know, stuff like that. I'm not so sure that's completely accurate, but mostly, what I'd like to be able to do on council is, as opposed to in a piecemeal fashion, I'd like for us to be able to look at what a pricing of scoreboards would be so we can kind of weigh them against these other items, as well as the issue that was, that has been raised of the playability, I guess you'd say, of the baseball fields themselves. Because i- if the goal is to do better marketing of our complex, I'm thinking playability is probably gonna be more important than a sidewalk that cuts across a diagonal as opposed to what we have. And so, you're saying this is the time, but is, we're really just approving lights? So, when would I actually, when will we actually get to a discussion of what's left, of the money that's left?
Adding something to the list?
Well, I mean, because we're not really taking action on this list. We're taking action on the lights right now, are we not?
So, the way this is gonna work is if the item's less than fifty thousand, the staff's basically going out there and moving on, purchasing the item. But when it's over fifty thousand, that's when it comes to you all. So, in this case, the soccer lights meet that category, but.
So, the rest of these will go on without us getting to look at it, is what you're saying?
Unless you say, we'd rather you not do that, bring these back for consideration, especially, like you said, the scoreboard, you wanna consider that.
Yeah.
Have like a chance to add, add some things.
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause, 'cause actually, there's one on here, the fertigation, I was all on board with, as far as this is a good thing. But I've heard some reasoning why that may not be what we wanna do. It has to do with, if this makes sense to. So, a fertigation system is basically fertilizer going into the watering system, so it's gonna come out through the irrigation system, right? And the upside is, it's kind of a no-brainer, turn the switch and it's going, you're fertilizing. But I know from the wind in trying to water fields myself, you're gonna get uneven watering. And now, you're gonna get uneven fertilization at the same time. And the proof of that is ends up, if you take aerial views of fields that have fertigation systems, you have, you know, sort of crop circles, if you will, of where that rain or that irrigation water went. So, a discussion of some of these might be pertinent, and I can bring somebody who would talk about them if that helps, rather than, you know, just me being a guy that's talking about it. Same with the field. The playability of the baseball fields, I had actually been in conversations with Mr. Caraway, so he's one of the main designers. Maybe he was the designer, I don't actually know for sure if he went all the way to the end. And he talked about a solution to the playability. The top soil is not actually soil, it's equivalent of kitty litter. And so, I would like to be able to discuss those, so I, I don't, go ahead.
But, yeah, I think we need to get back to the lighting.
Well, no, what he's saying is, as far as this list goes, if we don't talk about it now, the rest of this list is gonna be executed without necessarily coming back to it. So, what I would like to do is, we can vote on the lighting, and if we could, if we don't wanna talk about these items, if we could stall the execution of the rest of the list until we do talk about them. Is that something we can do?
That would just need to be a motion and a second, a vote. However, let me ask the staff, is there anything on here that's critical that we move on sooner rather than later?
The lights, the irrigation. Yeah, the lights and irrigation and the sod.
Maybe the turf dugouts. I know they're getting pretty torn up outside the dugouts.
That's more aesthetically, but, and maintenance-wise.
Well, then, I mean, I still would, I would prefer to, I would prefer to, I would, can I, somebody already made a motion, yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
To approve the lights, right? So, can I make a second motion after we're done with the lights, then? Let's just do that.
Okay, yeah. What I would really like to see is better lights on the baseball fields so the umpires can actually see the balls and strikes.
Yeah, now, I know where you're going with that, but I will tell you that the fields you watch me umpiring on, it is a problem. If anybody has tried to umpire, the lights on the big pod.
That's your excuse, huh, you're sticking to it?
No, I was calling good game anyways. But the lights on the fields, on the big fields, are actually right in the line of sight of the batters and the umpire, just anyways.
Okay, all right, let's.
Yeah, but anyway, so we got a motion and a second, right?
Move forward on the motion regarding the lights, and then what was additional motion?
Okay, so, you know, I'd like to make a second motion, I guess. And I guess what I'd like to make, no, I don't guess. I'd like to make the motion that we hold off on the, unfortunately, fertigation is one of the things I'd like to have us look at. So, I'd like to hold off on the purchasing of the rest of the list until we can get it on an agenda where we are discussing it.
Can I add a point more, Mike? Is the way the items listed on the agenda, can we do that or not?
Yeah, I mean, council's got authority to tell you all to stop purchasing stuff and bring it back, I think that's all it's asking.
Yes.
Bring back that list.
With discussion?
Yeah.
Well, if there's consensus, I would give it to do that.
We don't need the motion, or do?
You really, I've seen councils, you don't need it. If there's consensus that we'll bring it back in probably that first or second meeting in July, where you all will kind of go through the list and hear from staff and their recommendations.
All right, do we have consensus?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Assuming you can wait that long.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll move your motion.
We are doing six G? Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would suggest we hold six G and do that in.
Executive session.
Executive session, thank you.
All right, there is a motion to move six G to executive.
Can we?
No.
Forgive me, I haven't read it in a while. That's your item to do the whole process?
Yes.
Yeah, that's just to be an open session. That's, you're not dealing with people.
We're not appointing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's just the application forms.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, so, we have comments?
Yes, pretty much changes to the board and commission's application forms and establish public notification process. I would like to simplify and merge the two applications. We've had problems with this before. I know of two incidents, one most recently where there's only one application filled out, not both, so I think that made the deadline. But that's something that can be, I think we can fix that pretty simply. And the other one was last meeting, I would have liked to have deferred the appointments to a board so that we could put out a public notice and that we are accepting applications, and we've kind of done it here and there. So, I'd like to move forward and make that a policy so we're fair to the citizens. Everybody has, everybody's notified and knows when the board is coming up.
Oh, okay, oh, I see, yeah, I got you. So, you're talking about the application forms and establishing public notification process?
Yes, I make it a policy.
Okay, all right.
And I think eighteen days prior to the council meeting of the appointment should be plenty. I think that's the Monday, two Mondays before is the council meeting?
It's Friday.
Is it the Friday?
Yeah, if it was eighteen, it ends up being Fridays.
Yeah, okay.
So, two Fridays before the appointment meeting. And.
Two Fridays would be when the announcement would go out.
Yes, ma'am, press release.
Right.
Okay, and then they have how long?
The cutoff date's already Wednesday, I believe.
Wednesday prior to the appointment.
Okay, all right.
So, Mayor, it's gonna take some time to work through the merging of the forms, and that's, that's something the council needs to do 'cause it's your applications for your appointments. So, if you wanna point a committee of the council, maybe two individuals, to look at the form, and then also perhaps come back with a recommendation on the public notification process at the same time.
All right, I'm going to suggest Councilman Vocal and Councilman Seigerman to work on that and bring it back to, bring the form back to us.
And I would, I'd like to add direction with that, that they look for, so we're essentially modifying, I think this stuff ends up being modifying the procedural rules of boards, or that's what I'd like to see it go, 'cause, so, the application form somehow is part of that, the notification process ideally is part of that. I'd like to see us add some things that revolve around this. One is create a more generic, to the extent that it can be, absences policy, 'cause instead of having each individual board, put that maybe in the procedural rules. And consider putting also in there procedural rules, things for each board like the board name, qualifications, the interview team, which is another thing that's not really written down anywhere, I don't think, and then the term. And that way, in the procedural rules, it has all this stuff, and we can go to one place for it. So, that would be my suggested direction, I guess.
Where is the interview team now? It's like minutes, it's not really, where's the interview team? Is it just a?
Well, they were sent out in the board book. There's, there are two sheets in the board book.
Right, so, okay.
Is by minute order.
Is the procedures, and one is interview team.
Yeah, so ideally, that stuff, I'd like to see if we could.
Well, I was going to suggest we add to the future agendas our plan for revising the procedural rules, because there's a few other things, too, besides that, so maybe we can.
So, what you guys are gonna be just working on is you're coming back with the recommendation. So, we don't have to discuss it again. I mean, we will, but that's what, all I'm saying.
It's kind of a nice time to do the procedural rule as well with the application, so.
Okay, but are you amending the motion?
Nope, I'm, I'm just.
To include the rules and procedures and?
No, I'm, I'm, I don't think I am. I'm suggesting that we're giving direction to this team.
Oh, okay, okay.
And to do that.
Yeah, we could address that.
Okay, you're here a motion.
I'll make a motion that, oh, somebody just punched it, go ahead.
Okay, all right. Is there a second?
Well, somebody didn't actually say it. Somebody, did I, did I push me?
Oh, I guess I pushed it, I'm sorry.
There you go.
I think I did. Okay, I move that we make changes to the board's and commission's application forms and the establish a public notification process and look at the entire process.
Okay.
And add the two people that we're identifying, right?
Okay, and.
Yeah, and.
We will add.
Councilman Vocal and Councilman Seigerman, okay. All right, let's vote on that.
I think I second it on my computer, but I don't know if it.
There you go, there you go.
Okay, it's on there.
Five oh. Okay.
Mayor, I'm about to recuse myself on six H. I have a property downtown.
Oh, that's right, okay, so, Councilman Vocal, Rikusus, Rikusus himself, let's look at your presentation regarding the formation of a contemplated tax increment reinvestment zone for downtown Kerrville.
Mayor, members of council, city manager, staff, my name is David Pettit, and I've been asked to provide some of the initial steps that we have looked at, looking at a downtown TIF. Let me say that it's an exciting time in Kerrville with the Kerrville 2050. Planning's not easy. I've gone through it. I've been in this business for twenty-five years in economic development planning. And this is a component that kind of comes out of some of the strategic planning that you're doing. And let me also just say that most successful downtowns have a tax increment reinvestment zone in place. And so, I'm here today to talk to you about the concept of tax increment financing. We did some boundary analysis. We looked at some potential developments and also looked at the next steps. I also had a funny joke about batting cleanup, but I didn't feel like saying it. There are the Longhorns and Texas Tech in the College World Series, so those are good things, so just a little humor.
Yeah.
To brighten the note, towards the end of the cleanup hitter here. But a TERS can be a valuable tool that can help facilitate investment and bring excitement, energy to a designated area. Let me first say that it's not a tax. That's the first thing people say, it's not a tax. Taxing entities actually redirect ad valorem taxes received from increment in increases in the property within the zone. They can help pay for the cost of public works, for public infrastructure, for economic development programs, and other programs benefiting the zone, including affordable housing. This is an academic chart, I made a point here, that kind of shows that, so when a TIF is put in place, the existing taxing jurisdictions are receiving their current ongoing share of general fund revenue. It's only any increases that would go into a special fund and are basically reinvested in that specific area. And so, it's become a very valuable tool. There's over five hundred TIFs in the state of Texas. And I can tell you, I've been working on downtown developments. I worked on downtown Fort Worth, downtown San Antonio. I've worked in a number of different downtowns to where the TIF has been a very valuable tool. The TIF revenue comes from two specific, two only revenue sources. New construction and then appreciation of real property. So, just as you live in a property, and where I live in my home, it seems like every year that the taxes are going up and up and up. And I know we have our fight with the legislature, and we have freezes on taxes for people over sixty-five. But that's the only way that increment occurs, is through new construction or through the appreciation of new values. Now, why would you wanna do a TIF? Private development activity would be expected within a designated area. It benefits an area at large rather than being project-specific. So, rather than just working on one specific project, it could be an entire area designated as a zone. It provides a funding source without impacting your current amount of funding that you receive from each participating. So, each taxing jurisdiction gets an opportunity to participate in these zones. It's the ability to leverage revenues from taxable value, taxable property within the TERS to generate a larger increment and take on larger issues. And it attracts potential developers and investors into areas that may not otherwise occur. One of the things that we heard on the 2050 plan is the need to focus on infill development and verticality. And what this does is attracts potential developers and investors to an area that otherwise might not occur and demonstrates a commitment to creating a sense of place and identity. You certainly have that, but I think it can be approved upon. In the Kerrville 2050 plan, the preferred scenario encourages new development focused on, we have to come up with new acronyms now, and so I was gonna call the CSAs, the city strategic assets and strategic infill with limited outward expansion towards, to better utilize existing assets. And so, those first strategic catalyst areas comprise the downtown core, which we saw, which is number one, and the central business district of the Kerrville metropolitan area. Per the plan, downtown should encourage development oriented towards the river. I think this is something that we're finding throughout urban planning is that people have been turning their backs on the river when it's your greatest asset. And so, I think it's right that we orient it towards the river corridor and engage with additional adjacent businesses and structures. Focus on redevelopment and catalyzing a renewed public interest in downtown. Downtown is the focus of a town. It's the pride and joy of any city. And I think downtown Kerrville is no exception. The guiding principle and sample action items included in the downtown focused items include pursue new downtown businesses and consider developing an incubator to encourage startups in downtown. Those are just a couple of the sample action items that are included in the Kerrville 2050. Those are just a couple of the sample action items, um, that are included in the Kerrville 2050. So if you look at the overall map for the Kerrville 2050, you can see, um, the, um, that's what I was looking for, was the acronym of the SCA, the Strategic Catalyst Area, that we'll now start to call those, being downtown. And what I have learned through doing over 100 TIFs in the state of Texas is that there's a couple of key things to, um, there's six essentials for a, uh, some successful public-private partnership. One is political leadership, um, you're definitely showing that here with your commitment to planning. Uh, uh, public sector involvement, you've certainly had that, demonstrated that. A well-thought-out plan, um, those details and unintended consequences. Communication with the stakeholders, uh, I skipped over a point there, which is a dedicated income stream, which was probably the most important, if you don't have an income stream, how are you going to do it? That's very important, and selecting the right partner. So I have found in my experiences of doing public-private partnerships, if you don't have the right partner, um, if the city's going to be at the table, um, having the right partner at the table is going to be a determining factor of success. And that's extremely important of having the right partner. So what we did, um, was we just took a look at, um, the overall, um, area and with direction from staff, looked at areas that could be redeveloped, and that's Paschal, um, as you can see in the river, down to Travis, um, going up to, um, Highway 16, following Main Street and Waters, Broadway. And what we did was we looked at what was the zoning within those areas, and then we said, well, could we make that potentially smaller? Um, and so we actually made, um, through staff's input, some smaller recommendations where we actually went just from Paschal to the river, over to Waters, working our way up, um, along Jefferson, um, up along Highway 16. Um, and so we did some analysis of both of those zones. So scenario one represents, um, 477 acres. That has, uh, an assessed value of about $131 million. Scenario two, the smaller version that was previously shown, has about 340 acres, 348 acres, or $108 million worth of assessed value. So the taxable value within those areas is about 103 versus 84. Um, the percent ownership, this is also important that we have found when we do TIFs, you don't want to put all your civic buildings in a TIF, because what's the problem with that is they don't generate revenue. Um, also churches, um, great things, great community assets, but they don't help move the needle in trying to achieve your economic development goals. So, um, we looked at the percent being private ownership, and so they both fall in that 78, um, percent private ownership. And, um, there's another, um, statute, statutory requirement under chapter 311 of the Texas Tax Code that you can't exceed, um, a city of your size more than, um, 50% of your city can't be in a TIF or a TERS. And I use those terms interchangeably. And what you see here is that this is a very small portion of your city that you're considering for a potential TERS. Um, the zoning, um, represents the central business district, downtown core, residential tran, transition, central business, um, central city districts 11, 12, 13, 17, 19, and 20. Um, and they both encompass the strategic catalyst area number one. So, um, both of them relatively, um, comparable in size and in zoning. If you look at the overall zoning map, you can see those, uh, different zoning categories represented in the larger area, and then also in the smaller area as well. What we did was, um, we looked at the pros and cons, um, and, um, overall, the larger boundary gives, uh, more opportunity for development and redevelopment, which in turn provides the opportunity for increment to be captured. If we make this so small, we wouldn't have the opportunity. So we got to cast as big a net as possible that's reasonable, um, that fits within your plans. And so, um, with this boundary, um, both potential boundaries allow the TERS to capture the development and growth along the major streets, uh, Main, Water, Highway, um, Main, Water, Highway 16. Uh, contains pockets of vacant land, including parcels of interest that could be targeted for new development. Um, opportunities unique to scenario one, increased land, area zone transitional, residential transition, excuse me. This late at night, I started to lose my voice, yes. Um, increased land zone residential transition, uh, where there's increased, uh, currently residential in close proximity to retail and commercial, so creating that mixed use that we heard, um, discussed so much in the 2050. Uh, increased land area along Guadalupe River, which is prime for development and redevelopment, and increased opportunities for infill development and redevelopment. And so based on this analysis, um, we created development projections, which is kind of the next step based on scenario one, just being that larger net. Um, none of this is final, um, and, and what we're presenting you is just some, uh, concepts of projections and how we kind of move, move forward and the potential. And so let me say this, um, predicting the future is probably, um, one of the hardest things to do. And, um, we, we try to go, go about it with, um, looking at vacant parcels, um, looking at development opportunities, um, looking at, um, uh, in downtown, there's a need for land assemblage, because sometimes you have smaller parcels and it requires that you have multiple parcels being assembled, um, and you have transitions of, um, properties. And so we took all of that into consideration, but once again, these are just assumptions about how we think. Um, I, I do have a pretty good track record of, uh, projecting these, but once again, these are just assumptions, uh, of development. But if we looked at the overall, um, development, and I broke this down into years 1 through 10 and 11 through 20, and focusing on, um, retail, commercial, which was really highlighted in the 2050 plan, um, residential, uh, some hotel opportunities in the downtown core, I think that's a real opportunity that we have here, that that represents, um, about $73 million over a 20-year period of new investment that could be put into downtown.
So that incremental value is the, the projected total increment? That's as if we were to give all of the increment to this, that would be the amount?
That, that's the taxable value.
Yeah.
And I'm about to get into the incremental projections, so I've got a matrix for you on that. So on the development projections, as far as we've broken it out into, um, what is, um, retail? Um, what is office? What is residential, um, hotel? And total, um, development, projected square feet of, uh, development? Um, we also have broken it down into, I really think that looking at your overall downtown, um, having worked on downtowns, is that you have opportunity for some smaller 5 to 10 to 15, um, mixed ju, uh, mixed-use developments that have, um, multiple, multiple stories with ground floor retail. Um, and I think that there's a real desire for empty nesters and others that would want to have the walkability of a downtown. And I, I really see that, plus I see the opportunity for, um, a, a couple of hotels in the downtown area as really being a focal point, not huge hotels, but hotels that could bring, uh, significant traffic and tourism dollars to the overall city. To fund, uh, the cit, uh, the public improvements, uh, within a TERS, the city would contribute a percentage yet to be determined of its real property increment within the boundary for the following possible projects. Anything public you can imagine falls within this category. Um, that's, uh, water facilities, sanitary sewer, transit parking improvements, street intersection improvements, open space, parks, economic development grants, administrative cost. Um, I did mention just previously, affordable housing can be one of those components. So this is a toolkit. It gives you the tools to be able to address the opportunities that will arise as you've kind of designated this area as a high priority for the city. So looking at, um, just a 50% participation of the city's increment over a 30-year term, um, and I do think that a 30-year term is probably appropriate, we can continue to study that.
A what year, 30?
30.
Okay.
Um, it, just because the time you start to plan something and by the time it gets up, uh, in running and you start to get that tipping effect, um, you're really, you're 15 before you start to hit your stride within a TIF. But at 50%, you're looking at about, um, $9.6 million. Um, 75%, um, now this is only of the increment, and this is only with city participation, about 14.4. And with 100%, you have about $19 million worth of, um, potential TERS, um, increment over that time period. Now, um, what we looked at in our analysis was if the city were to contribute 100%, so this is just a what-if, you're also going to collect, um, sales tax, business personal property tax, and hotel occupancy tax. So over that 30-year period, you would generate $249 million with that proposed development. At 100%, you'd be putting 19 towards the TIF, but your net benefit would be $230 million. And this does not include any of the other taxing jurisdictions, which we'd certainly approach about potential, um, participation in there. So, um, other taxing jurisdictions, uh, it's per the statute, it's the city, um, takes the direction of establishing the TIF, and I ca, um, talk about it within the Texas two-step. Um, there's one, which is a creation ordinance, which sets the boundary, the term, the TIF board, um, and sets a preliminary project and financing, uh, uh, plan. And then the second one is a, um, and then also a TIF board. Um, but then the second one is a project and financing plan, which basically says, this is how we'd like to spend those dollars as they kind of go forward. So two important processes, one is, uh, will require some work, but what we've completed to date is a taxable value analysis of, uh, similar developments to establish assumptions. So basically everything that we've done, we've, we've been based on Kerrville actual market data and development projections for, uh, future land uses, timing and proposed developments. And we have a cash flow that we can now use, um, with supporting spreadsheets for a 30-year time period. So, um, our recommendation is that we've done significant amount of work, um, but we'd like to look at the opportunity to bring forward that two-step process to develop the finance plan, the project plan, and the detailed description of the TERS and other exhibits, um, required for your review and approv, approval per the state statute requirements. And, um, nothing is off the table here, we can look at additional boundary changes, but this is just kind of a preliminary analysis, and with that, I'll answer any questions.
I think I could use an example, it doesn't have to be tonight, it could be, um, you could use a comparable city and perhaps?
I have a good example now, that'll be pretty quick.
Okay.
So, um, in downtown Fort Worth, there was, um, a gentleman named Ed Bass that wanted to make some major investments in downtown, and he asked the city, when's the last time you spent CIP money in downtown? And there was about $300 million worth of value in downtown. And they went back and they looked, and this is in the early 90s, and they said, the last time we spent money from a CIP in downtown was 1972. And he goes, well, I'm about to spend millions of dollars in downtown. I'd like a way that I could capture that, make sure that it's spent on public infrastructure where I'm spending my money. And so the TERS was the mechanism for doing that. And I can tell you today, downtown Fort Worth is one of the top downtowns in the United States, and it's all because of the TERS. And so it's basically, it's, uh, the dollars that he was generating before, downtown was generating before, was, uh, support, um, supporting a lot of that suburban sprawl.
Mm-hmm.
And so this is just a way to reinvest it, and basically, um, it lays out a roadmap. And any request for funding would have to come before the TERS board and come before the city council for approval. But it provides a good roadmap, and I think Fort Worth is a good example of how they've done it. And there's a number of these, um, I, I, it's hard to, to think of a, a city throughout the, um, state of Texas that doesn't have a downtown. We, we just did one for Bay City, um, uh, and, and so we, we do them all over, we just did three in, um, today, my associate did three in El Paso. So they're very commonly used tools, um, it's not impacting your general fund, and I think it just gives you something in your toolkit, and basically gives you that menu of options to be able to implement your plans, so. Hopefully that's a quick example.
Can you tell, you listed, um, economic development grants, how, how would that even function?
Uh, so within the, so the, the TIF statute is found under the Tax Code, chapter 311. Um, and within that, it basically gives the TIF board the authority to have chapter, local government, chapter 380, um, grant programs. So as long as it, the use of the dollars stimulate business and commercial activity, which is a decision of the TIF board and the city council, you can use those dollars.
So they just have an authority to give out 380 grants?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But it's a, it's kind of a mother may I twice.
Right.
It's a, um, two-step process.
And, you know, as far as affordable housing in a downtown thing, um, does that even make sense? Like, do affordable housing on land that's probably prime real estate?
You know, um, affordable housing, a sticky widget, because, um, I, I think that, um, you said it, and I haven't looked at the numbers, but that, you know, there's a, a, a lack of affordable housing, and I think we're finding that everywhere.
Right.
Uh, I, I read a Texas, uh, A and M real estate statistic. If you're looking for a house, you know, less than $100,000, good luck in the state of Texas, and so it's, you just can't do it. Um, but I think that it's one of the things that would be, want to be considered as a part of this. Um, and what we've actually done is not concentrate affordable housing, but do mixed income. So if you're doing, let's say, 15 units, that three to five of those be at 80% median income.
Yeah.
And so you have a mix of incomes, and so not you're concentrating all your affordable housing in one area, you're dispersing it throughout.
Yeah.
So you avoid some of the common problems that we've had with urban blight in the past.
Okay, and then in our comprehensive plan, we talk about a couple of things in our downtown where they should go out and ask for EIC money, does that make sense? I mean, if we've got, if we're withholding TERS money into the zone, should, is it good practice to kind of hoard more tax money into that same zone?
So I, I think it's, um, the TERS, um, if it has a healthy fund balance, and, and two ways that you can do funding through a TERS. One is you start off and you don't have any money.
Right.
And so it's a reimbursement TERS. And so, um, the developer is the one that advances the funds to, for the public improvements, and they gets reimbursed over time. Um, sometimes cities have gone a, a step further to where they've actually monetized that and put it up front.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I think it's just a, a, a part of your budgeting process, a careful allocation of your resources. But if the TIF is in place, um, nine times out of 10, it becomes the first line of defense for incentivizing projects.
Okay.
Um, that, that's just been my experience through doing this for 25 years.
Uh, who administers it within the city?
Um, typically it falls within the CFO's role and, um, someone, you know, within the city manager's office, or if you do have an economic development. Um, I did work for an organization, uh, with the city of Fort Worth, they didn't have an economic development department when I was there. I came from San, I was, did economic development in San Antonio, and, uh, they hired Downtown Fort Worth, Inc. to administer it, uh, because they didn't have a staff. Um, those are very few and far between, a majority of the time, it's handled by the city manager and city management staff and the CFO.
In, in, in terms of coming back to present to us, it sounds almost like we need a workshop lea, leading up to council decisions.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't disagree, I think that there's a lot of education, because the word TERS is, many times, as I can say it, that's why I said it's not a tax, and it's basically where the revenue's going from the general fund. Um, be happy to conduct a, a workshop, uh, I created a, for downtown Amarillo, a TERS, and so we basically gave a TERS 101, this is what you can do, and these are some, you know, lessons learned, um, and best practices, and here's some things you probably shouldn't do. And we'd be happy to, uh, help conduct that with the council and just kind of walk through, because I always feel that, you know, why reinvent the wheel when people have been down the road before? And so that's why it's best to just kind of present you with best case, um, scenarios, or best case.
And I would think council and. And I would think council and key staff members, so that we're all on the same page.
What we typically did, like when we did with Amarillo, was we sat down with CFO, the planning director, city manager, mayor was very involved, and basically said, this is, okay, we've got our downtown plan, kind of like your comprehensive plan, this is the next step, but how do we want to use these resources? I think the most important decision probably is, really, you can amend these things as they move along, but it's the amount of participation that you put into the TIF. So, for every new dollar that's generated, is 50 cents going into the TIF, or, and 50 cents go into the general fund, or is 100%? So, with the three that we did in El Paso today, we had one that was a city project. It was an old stadium site they're trying to redevelop. 100% of the city's increment is going towards that project, towards $96 million worth of improvements. The other two were more residential in nature, and 33%, so, 66 cents of every new dollar that's generated is going to the general fund, 33 cents is going to go into special public projects for storm drainage, essentially, was the issue that they had up there. So, I think those are some of the major important issues and hurdles. But like I said, it's a, it's a two-step process. One, preparing the plan, but then also setting the appropriate boundary, but you can amend that boundary. But what you do is you set the base of the year you created the TERs. So, if we put in the TERs this year, the base year would be January 1 of 2018. So, if you do it next year, it'd be 19. And you know how property taxes flow, so it's 13 months from that capture date to that revenue comes into the coffers of the TIF. So, that's why I say it takes three to five years to start building up, but at least you have the tool in place. And so, we'd be more than happy to come down and provide you with some real-world, you know, best case, you know, best practices that would help kind of walk you through how it can be used, and how can, sometimes it's been taken advantage of, because there's always those unintended consequences when we do things like this. So, we'd be more than happy to do that.
Well, I would like that, I would encourage that, is whatever you come back with, I'd like a few points to be brought back to us. One would be, you know, I asked this when you had that thing at the Calu Theater. You know, as a PR, we're going to have to sell this idea to the public, and they're going to wonder about it. And one of the questions they're going to ask is, why are we, I personally believe in the idea of a downtown that works, but not everybody does. A lot of people will say, eh, downtown's always tried, we've tried, it never works, blah, blah, blah. So, they're going to be reluctant to say, yeah, let's go ahead and keep some tax dollar increment or not in the downtown. So, how do, how do we address the public there? And then, another one is the boundary that we've got drawn, and relative to what we were talking, discussing before, both scenarios that you've got, in the top part of this map, that's buttoned right up against the neighborhood we were just talking about. Okay, so, the question I would have is, you talked about affordable housing. What would be the downside and the upside to including that neighborhood in there as a way to, if you will, reinvest in that neighborhood while we're also reinvesting in downtown? So, that's one question. The other is, if these are, you know, sort of the holy grail of downtowns, what are people saying that say, don't do them? What logic are they using to that?
Well, I think that, so, there are going to be individuals that don't want to do it, because my belief is, I think, very similarly aligned with yours, is that a strong downtown indicates a strong city in a strong area. But there are those that maybe don't like coming downtown.
Right.
My argument is that, okay, you're, currently, it's not impacting you now, so it's only increases in valuations. So, that's one of the, one of the discussions. Sometimes it's just going to be, you know, we have to agree to disagree on some of those, particularly that, you know, live further out, that don't enjoy the downtown as much as possible. And your second question was related to the, oh, the affordable housing.
Yeah, the boundaries.
The boundaries. You know, I think that the boundaries can certainly be looked at, because, you know, what you're looking at, and what you were talking about, and we were hearing the definition of gentrification, is, you know, we all want areas to prosper, but we need to make sure that this is a place that you can, you know, live throughout your life, through all stages of life, and be able to afford it. And so, I think that's one of the things that you, we should probably look at, is because there's going to be spillover effect of a successful downtown into that neighborhood.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's, that happens everywhere, and I think that, a couple of the examples, affordable housing is a crisis across the country, and how we address it, it's going to be through tools like this, because there's just not a whole lot of tools in the toolkit. And I firmly believe that it has to be on a mixed income, not solely affordable housing all by itself, because that hasn't worked, and that's been proven.
The, I think we need to move on. What is the motion to respond to this?
Well, the recommendation of the staff was to move forward with the next step, which would be the articles of incorporation, and creation of the TERs board, and so on and so forth, which would require a separate action on the part of the council, including the financing plan that he mentioned, those two important documents. That is already part of our contract with him to do that, but this is kind of the check-in with you all, to see if that's what you want to do in terms of going forward. We could still do that, and still answer a lot of the questions that have come up this evening, and still have a workshop environment where we look at that additional information at the same time. Or we could slow it down, and just have the workshop, and not do that other piece until you guys are a little more comfortable. But, so, it's up to the council in terms of whatever motion you want to make, of the, either of those two options.
So, we can do it in parallel, basically, the workshop and move forward. The other is, is it a requirement that we're, can we make the decision on the boundary at a later date?
You'll do that when actually you, when you create the zone.
It won't change the workup that's going on, right?
No.
It'll change some numbers, but...
And so, if I can just, I really, I call it everywhere I go, the Texas two-step. So, the first step is that creation ordinance, which sets the boundary, the term, the board of directors. Typically, it's the city councils, the board of directors, and then has a preliminary project and financing plan. And then, once the board meets, it kind of hashes out the preliminary project and financing plan, and then through separate ordinance, you approve a final project and financing plan, and that's kind of the governing document for how you spend money out of the TIF.
Is it also the one that decides what percentage of income we're capturing?
Yes, sir. And so, none, nothing that you're doing here by us moving forward would impact that. This requires one public hearing notice, and so, before the creation, you have to have a public hearing notice on the boundary and the benefits of the tax increment reinvestment zone. But all of that, I think, we can do this on a parallel track with the overall workshop to be able to explain this in much greater detail.
I make the motion that we proceed.
Okay, you're probably going to have to be a little more specific with what proceeding.
Yeah, we need to maybe say what the recommended action is.
Proceed with the TERs for downtown Kerrville, and the assumption is workshop, and then early documents related to proceeding.
Absolutely. We'd be, make ourselves available, whatever's convenient for staff and the council to kind of work through that workshop. We have it, we've already done it, and so, I think it'd be very beneficial for us to do that for you guys.
Mayor, right now, your workshops are booked all the way through July. So, this would be another workshop if you wanted to do it before then, before August.
I don't personally have a problem with that, if you want to do that.
I don't think this would be like that intense.
I see 30 minutes to 45 minutes of just examples of around the state of best practices.
Does motion have to provide direction to create a public hearing? Is that what we're actually doing, too?
No, that would be part of the process for the ordinance.
Okay.
By state law.
Okay.
We're going to need more than 30 or 45 minutes.
Well, yes, I have, it depends on how in-depth we want to go, but yes, we can provide you with that detail, and we'll see where it goes from there, but yes, sir.
And we want to walk out, out of there, being able to appear reasonably intelligent about this.
Be done with it, yeah. Have a decision.
We'll pay a little for that.
All right. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay.
Somewhere in here.
Any further discussion? Okay. David, thank you, and thank you for the late hour.
Well, I'm happy to be the cleanup yitter, and as a Texas Tech Red Raider, I'm happy that, and I wore the Longhorn, the Longhorn fans out there to, to go on the College World Series. So, thank you all very much for your...
All right, all right. Okay, I've got a question. The next item is a part of the executive session. Okay. But we also have the city manager's report. So, are we going to do that before we go into executive session?
I can do that right now. I can just tell you that all I have is the CIP report, and so, we can just share that, and then I can take questions on it later.
Okay, all right. Okay.
So, he's going to pass that out now.
Okay.
So, on 6I, Mayor, the, Drew wants to introduce the item before we go into executive session, and y'all would need to take a vote to go into executive session on that item.
Right.
Okay.
Planning and zoning commission looked at this in May. They have requested a waiver for sewer and sidewalks as part of their development, but planning and zoning commission also recommended further pieces through a development agreement, and we've been negotiating with the applicant to bring a draft for you, that staff is ready to present in executive session. The planning commission did give their recommendation.
So, will you present that to us in the executive session?
I believe EA will.
EA, okay.
We're going to actually look at a draft? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So, I am open to a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
So, I move that we go into executive session under, what one are we doing here? On 6I?
6I.
Is it 071? Okay, I'll just say we're going, I move that we go into executive session under 551071 for the item 6I regarding a, I guess it's a development agreement for Medina River Estates. And I would further add to the motion, I guess, that we are, that we go into executive session for 8A, 8B, and 8C under 551074.
7, 7A, B and C. 8?
It says 8.
And there's not a 7A, yeah. Well...
It's the board appointments.
Item 7 was a blank item, just for you know.
Okay, so, 7A is the right one?
7A, 7B.
Oh, I see, okay.
Okay, I'm correct, because it's different.
So, it should be 7, not A.
Okay.
Yeah, because 7 in the nation in discussion is blank. So...
So, is my motion 8A, 8B, 8C? 7. Okay, so, okay, got you. So, I move that we go into executive session for 6I under 551071, and for 7A, 7B, 7C, the board appointments, under 551074.
I'll second.
Okay. All right. I spoke?
Oh.
All right? Okay.
And I'm going to make a detour.
Yeah. Okay. Folks, thank you for your patience and your perseverance.
Thank you very much.
Come back out of executive session into the open session. So, no action on 61?
6I.
6I.
6I, yeah, sorry. And regard to board appointments, what motions do we have?
I'd like to make a motion on 8A that we appoint Robert Irvin to zoning board of adjustment as a regular member, and Pablo Brinkman as an alternate.
Okay. All right.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion second? All in favor, indicate that, or opposed.
That's Cheryl Brown, everybody.
Wait a minute, I've got to, I'm...
You need to join in?
Here we go, there we go. Okay.
Okay. Our next motion in regard to board appointments.
8B, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for building board of adjustment and appeals. I recommend, or I, that we put on there Christina Holcomb and Armando Delamora.
Okay, is there a second?
You hit the motion button?
And Christina would be a regular.
We hit the motion button?
They both, as regular members.
Hit the motion button?
Yeah.
There it is. I'll second.
Okay. Are we have a motion second?
Take it away, Cheryl. Thank you.
Both are all in.
Survey says, I'm sorry, beep beep zoom, on 8C, I would like to make a motion, this is for planning and zoning commission, I would like to make a motion that we move David Jones from alternate to the regular member position vacated by Mr. Barnett, and that we install Tricia Byram and Bill Morgan as alternates on planning and zoning.
I'll second.
Okay. You have a motion second?
Somebody wake her up.
All right, all of those are motions passed, 5-0. Are there items for future agendas?
Oh, yes.
Go ahead.
I would like to propose that we review our ethics, policy, and rules procedures that we have in place with some definite changes, perhaps revisions and additions to it, some of which happened tonight regarding the TIF and TERs and things like, excuse me, the board application process, so...
All right.
Okay, and I'd also like to see one, I'm sorry, go ahead. Okay, to consider the possibility of modifying sort of the appointment member structure for EIC, to give it a little more accountability with an eye towards, I guess in some cities, and it's been suggested even in this one, of something more like, we've got seven members, something like a, one council person appoints one EIC member, or something like that. But anyways, that's the future agenda item.
All right. Do we vote on those recommendations, or just list?
No, those are just out there.
Okay, okay. All right. Anything else before we adjourn?
No, I would motion that we adjourn.
I second.
Motion second to adjourn?
I force it.
No, but click that loud thing. Bang, there you go.